Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business.
Good evening. We're going to get started for the August 5th, 2019 Board of Selectmen meeting. We're about to go into executive session under Chapter 30A S-21A 3, Smythe v. Falmouth Conservation Commission, and this is to consider plaintiff's request for extension to file the appeal. And as Chair, I state that not to go into executive session could prejudice the town's position in the future. And we'll return to open session at 7:00.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you roll call?
Roll call, please.
Brown, aye.
Corrigan, aye.
Jones, aye.
English, Praga, aye.
Great. Thanks. Good evening. We have returned from executive session, and if you would please join me in a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Bill, let's be first. Seat's really tall. Okay. We're going to start tonight with a proclamation. This is a proclamation for Catherine Lee Bates' Day. It is going to be her 160th birthday on August 12th, so we have a proclamation that reads, "Be it hereby known that the Town of Falmouth has decreed August 12th, 2019 as Catherine Lee Bates' Day in celebration of her 160th birthday and for her multiple contributions to the culture of our town and our country. Her work continues to impact Falmouth to this very day, given this 5th day of August, 2019, Falmouth Board of Selectmen." And I hope folks will take a look, the Chamber, excuse me, the museum's on the green, will have some events that day. There's going to be just sort of a celebration in town around Catherine Lee Bates' birthday and the contribution that she made. I think folks know her for America the Beautiful, but there's so many other things. She was a professor for a long time at Wellesley College, and she really was just such an important figure and a really fascinating individual. So hopefully, folks will be able to participate in some of those activities.
You didn't have her as a teacher, though.
Just missed her.
So we move to approve the proclamation.
Do I have a second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great. Thank you.
So for recognition tonight?
For recognition, Mr. Brown.
We have a very nice recognition tonight for lifeguard Kelly O'Neil, who works at the Chappie Beach, and she was involved in a lifesaving incident recently. And I believe Mr. Condon is here also, who was the subject of the rescue. So I'd love to have Kelly come up and share a little bit about how the day went, and if Mr. Condon wanted to make a comment as well, that'd be great.
And maybe Mr. Magardo is here, too.
Yes. So whoever wants to talk first would be certainly welcome.
I've never been shy. Bruce Magardo, the B Superintendent for the Town of Falmouth, and I want to thank the Board and thank the Town Manager's Office for the kindness of acknowledging what we do in the summertime. I have a fantastic staff, and these lifeguards here are just examples of how good we are. So thank you very much. I'd like to have Amanda Clayton come up, and she's going to help us a little bit.
Great.
Hi, everyone. My name's Amanda Clayton. I'm a staff guard for the Falmouth Beaches. This is my ninth summer. We are here tonight to recognize Kelly, as well as Owen and Rob, who were the two other lifeguards at Chappie that were involved in the rescue. Kelly O'Neil, this is her fourth year with us. Owen Ventorelli is his rookie year, his first summer. And Robert Libertini, who couldn't be here tonight, is his fourth year as well. On Sunday, July 7th, around 3:50 PM, it was just after the lifeguards had rotated and switched, and after the PAs, the parking attendants had left. Kelly was at the head lifeguard stand, noticed a man doing backstroke, and slowly, his stroke was deteriorating, so she took the rescue board out to make sure he was okay. During her paddle out to check on him, the patron in distress became inactive and then passive drowning. Patron in distress, so she went to grab him. He was sinking in the water. Kelly activated the EAP from the water and worked with patrons to get him to the shore and aided with CPR with the help of a nurse practitioner and a doctor on the scene. Rookie Owen Ventorelli was the secondary responder. He called Falmouth EMS and continued water surveillance, as well as brought the AED to the scene and debriefed and directed the paramedics once they arrived. Robert Libertini continued water surveillance, so others were safe on the beach and supported the scene as needed. They were able to get the victim breathing on his own, pulse stronger and more alert prior to transport to the hospital. So many people came up after to praise Kelly, Rob, and Owen for all they had done. I arrived just after the paramedics had left and saw so many people come up and make sure that Kelly was okay and to just continually praise how well they did. And as I was there, EMS returned to bring the AED back that had been used, and the captain said that the fast response of Kelly and knowing to go out and check on him saved his life. So it was really an amazing day for our team. We're super proud of Kelly's victim recognition and all of the guards taking on additional roles and controlling the crowd, the parking lot, and getting that all done without the normal support we have of our parking attendants. So, yeah.
Excellent.
Kelly, at this point, you can come up. Owen, too?
Owen, aye. Yeah, we're just really happy that Mr. Condon is okay. And, you know, I got trained through Falmouth, and I feel like I was able to respond so quickly and prevent something from happening because the training just kicked in, and it was always, we're always taught preventative versus waiting for something bad to happen. And I think that that was why I was just able to go out, and I felt like something was wrong. And all I can ask for is that he's okay, and I'm glad he's sitting here with us, and we're buddies now. We see each other all the time at the beach. We talk all the time. I mean, it's like newfound friendship, so, yeah. So, thank you.
Great.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I'll just say a few things, and, you know, a lot of what they were speaking about that happened later, I just can't speak about because I was basically unconscious, so. But the fact of the matter is that Kelly was paying attention, doing what she should do, and responded quickly, and fortunately, that's pretty much why I'm here to speak with Generally, I'm pretty good at public speaking, but it's a little difficult except to say thank you to Kelly, to everybody, and what a great job she did, and everybody else who was concerned. The doctors on the scene, the, you know, ambulance people and medical rescue and Falmouth Hospital. It was a group effort where everybody did everything right, but the key thing was she had to do it first, and she did.
I'm glad you're with us. I would like to take the opportunity to introduce the staff who are responsible for training. And the lifeguards we have are as good as we can find, because we only want the best and brightest, and then we make them a Falmouth guard. That's another whole story. So I could ask you, please, my staff, to just rise, tell them who you are and what you do, and how many years you've been here.
All right. I'm Lisa Roger. I'm the Swim Program Director, so I do the training for the lifeguard training program, and I oversee the swim program at all the beaches. I've been here 17 years.
Bruce, could we have them come to the microphone?
Absolutely. They'd be thrilled.
Yep.
They'd be thrilled. We didn't practice, but they'd be thrilled.
We want to make sure we get their names and have a chance to recognize them.
All right. Get to hear my spear again. My name is Lisa Roger. I'm the Swim Program Director with my counterpart, Marla Manning, and what we do is we run the swim program. So we do the lifeguard training classes, and we coordinate the swim program at all the beaches, so the swim lessons. And I've been here for 17 years as a Falmouth lifeguard staff.
Cool.
Hi, I'm Margaret Clayton. I am a staff guard for the Falmouth Beaches. My job is to work with the 58 full-time and four part-time lifeguards, to place them every day, discipline, organization, exercise, and this is my 13th year on staff, my sixth year as a supervisor.
So I work opposite Maggie. We work together on the days we're both on, and then one of us in charge on our days off. This is my ninth summer with the beaches and my second as a supervisor.
Good evening. Thanks for having us tonight. My name is Jen Roger. I'm the beach coordinator, and this is my 14th summer, and I'm so grateful to come back every year and work with such an amazing group of people, from the administrative staff to the guards, and so grateful for Kelly and Owen and all their hard work. So congratulations to both of you.
And if I can just say, just while everyone's taking their seat, well, first of all, Mr. Condon, your public speaking under these circumstances is better than I think pretty much anyone in this room would do, so don't be hard on yourself. But I just want to say, this is, you know, the reason why when we have conversations about what happens on the beaches, you know, these young men and women really are doing the thing they're supposed to do, and it's not being distracted by all the many things that happen on a beach, but it's paying attention to what's in front of them, you know, in the water. And, you know, it really does take a special personality to be able to do that, because it's easy to be, and our personalities are generally that, that we're distracted by whatever's going on, and these folks just really, you know, put the focus where it needs to be. And so I know you're asked to do so many different things all at one time, and I know sometimes you don't hear enough of the compliments, and sometimes you just get a little bit more of the criticism, because, you know, folks come to the beach expecting a certain thing, and maybe it doesn't turn out that way. But I hope that you know that just one event like this, I hope clears the entire slate for any criticism that you hear, because really, this is just truly a life-changing event. So thank you, and it's something that, you know, we don't always see things that rise to this level, but every day, I know that you're out there, and I know that you're, you know, really being preventative as you're, you know, speaking to, looking for those things that could become more dangerous. So thank you so much. We have such gratitude from this Board and from the town, and of course, from everyone here in this room, so thank you.
Thank you all for coming tonight.[1237.58][1237.58](applause)
Great. We have, everyone just wants to go home now, don't you? All right, we have announcements. Any announcements from the Board?
Just one that I'd like to make, that tomorrow night, the Historical Commission is beginning their presentation on their proposed changes in the historic districts, and that's going to be, the first one is going to be tomorrow night at the Civil Defense Room in Town Hall, starting at 5:00 PM. That's downstairs here. And then on August 8th, at West Falmouth Library at 5:00 PM. August 14th, Ratcliffe Room in Woods Hole Library, 5:00 PM. August 22nd, Herman Room in Falmouth Library, 5:00 PM. And September 3rd, the Civil Defense Room again at 5:00 PM. So there's five dates, so anybody that's in a historic date, you may want to attend this if you have any questions about what proposed changes in the neighborhood would be.
Great. Lots of opportunity for them to take public comments, so hopefully, people will participate.
Right. And I was going to announce the Tietik Civic Association meeting, but that's postponed until next week, and they don't have a time certain yet, so we'll have to wait on that. But look for it next week.
Thank you. Now, we have time for public comment. Public comment is on routine matters that are not on tonight's agenda, and each person is allotted two minutes, please. Don't make any personal attacks on anyone in particular, and we try to cap the full period of public comment to 10 minutes. So who's here for public comment? Kate, in the back, and then you, sir.
Yeah, we're together.
Sorry about that, a little slow.
Nope, take your time. And just as a reminder, as Mr. Zammer's coming up, that public comment, because it's not on the agenda, no matter how important the topic is you're raising, we cannot respond to it, so you can just hear what your comment is. Thank you, welcome. Please introduce.
Thank you. Bill Zammer, 220 Scranton Avenue, owner of Flying Bridge Restaurant. Chairman of the Board and members of the Board, thank you for letting me address you this evening. This past Saturday, a band concert was held at the hat, at the band, the show at Falmouth Harbor on Scranton Avenue. Apparently, it was known that this band would perform, would bring, attract approximately 500 people. In fact, it was more than that, probably in the vicinity, as I understand, 800 people. There was no provision whatsoever for parking or shuttle service whatsoever. It's beyond, beyond my imagination, who would have granted a permit such as this? It's just, it's crazy. The ensuing congestion was unfair to businesses on the area, and I'm being altruistic, my business was affected. The residents there couldn't find places to park, the boat owners got blocked in. It was just an absolute mess. I don't know why it would do this, but it's great to have events. We do, we have great events. We have the flea market, we have the farmer's market every week, we have the band show, we have the car shows, and they're wonderful events in that area. But an event of this size had no business being there, being permitted there. It belongs in the fairgrounds, or even a high school or something. The inconvenience it caused, everyone was incredible. We actually had to hire people to defend our parking lots, and the ensuing arguments that, of course, that took place, because we had to save room for our guests. The market, Windfall Market had people out there, we had people out there. It was just, it was a mess. In addition to that, I don't understand how, they roped off the area and were charging people $25 to get in. How does one allow a public park, that you allow people to charge to go into a public park? I mean, it's never happened, to my knowledge, it's never happened before. I gather they made a small donation to some local charity, but did the town make anything off of this? I don't know why they would do that. I guess, I don't know why, again, I'd love to know what Chief Dunn would think about the thing, how he handled it. I called Sue, as a matter of fact, because my concern was for the safety of a lot of people as well, that who was watching out for all this? The harbor master, what he had to say about it. I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Zammer. Sorry, it's just, it's the two-minute mark.
Okay, in conclusion, I just hope you look at the future events that are coming up, because I think there's some more of these, and it's just, it's insanity.
Thank you.
And I still have a mild high from the aroma that permeates the area. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. I'm Joe Strazula, 12 Old Dock Road. I've been here for the last month, and I wanted to inform the Board that there still is a barrier for waiting at Chappie Beach. There is still not adequate parking, and I've heard nothing as far as a resolution to the problem that I asked about a month ago. I would ask the Board to please let me know who's going to keep informing the public or of a solution, or what we can do to resolve this issue, and what the timeframe for such a resolution is going to be. Is this summer lost? Is there no opportunity to do anything before the last few weeks of the summer are gone? And what is the plan for resolving the issues at Chappie's parking lot as far as people waiting to get into the beach? I've made my points clear in previous meetings, and I think some of the staff of the Beach Committee has done the same thing, and members of the Beach Committee, but so far, I've heard nothing as far as what we're going to do to resolve the problem, and I'd like to be, ask you to hope to hear from someone soon as to what the plan is going to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other individuals for public comment? No? Okay. Really excited tonight. We have filled the position of Associate Town Council, and are you going to do the introductions, Julian?
I'm happy to do so.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Town Manager, it was my great pleasure to appoint Iri Mullen as our new Associate Town Council, succeeding Pat Harris in that position. And Iri was one among a large number of well-qualified applicants for that position. We were very gratified to have that response, and she was the best candidate among that group of candidates, and very pleased to appoint her to the position. Most recently, Iri has been working as the Massachusetts Superior Court Research Attorney. She lives on Cape Cod, so she's in the area and understands many of the issues that confront us, and today was her first official workday in Town Council's office. We're pleased to have Iri with us here this evening, and if Iri, if she'd care to, and it's agreeable to the Board, I'm sure they'd welcome a few comments and a chance to welcome you individually.
Yes, welcome. Thank you, Julian. I was very happy to accept this position in my prior role. We deal with whatever the docket in Barnstable County is, and I think Falmouth will recognize that they, their land litigation is a large part of that docket, so I was happy to accept the position here, having seen so much of what you have done during my period in the last seven years. So thank you for offering me the position. I look forward to working with all of you and to helping pursue the high level of work in the Town Council's office that has happened over Frank's tenure and under Pat Harris as well. So thank you for that.
Thank you, welcome.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Iri.
I know Frank is very happy. As a neighbor to your office, I think he's had a little bit of a spring in his step that wasn't there for a couple of months, so.
Okay, may I just say a few words? I'd like to take this opportunity, though, to acknowledge the great work that Pat Harris did. She was with us for 10 and a half years, and when she announced her retirement in April, we all felt a sense of loss. But as Julian has pointed out, we went through a rather rigorous process, and we received a number of applications, many of them very good, and we winnowed them down and chose Iri. She has excellent recommendations, we've seen some of her work, we know her experience, she's worked assisting judges decide many municipal cases in Barnstable County, and I have great confidence in her. I'm very glad that she's here, and I think she'll be a great addition to the Office, so thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Okay, under summary of actions, licenses, we have an application for special one-day wine and malt liquor license, Woods Hole Historical Museum, Oyster Talk and Tasting, 579 Woods Hole Road, Friday, August 23rd, 2019. Is the applicant present? I don't know if you wanted to just say a couple of quick words?
This is our eighth annual Oyster Talk and Tasting. We have Simple Oysters Cooperative, Pete Chase, Mary Murphy, and Eric Matston. They come in and give a talk about growing oysters, and then it's They come in and give a talk about growing oysters, and then there's a tasting and a social event, so that's what we're doing.
Just state your name for the public.
Debbie Scanlon, I'm sorry, and the Director of the Museum.
Okay.
Thank you, and I know this will be the same comment I'll make, Doug Jones mentioned this before, he had to break for a meeting, and he'll come back, but just a reminder for all of the events, that there really be a separate area for, you know, that folks can't sort of have their wine and beer and wander anywhere.
Right, right.
You know, the event is the event, and I know we've had some concerns from folks in the past, not this event, but others. So, just a reminder to any of the applicants, to really make sure that your event is where that consumption takes place.
Definitely.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have application for special one-day wine and malt liquor license, Historic Highfield Incorporated, Bluegrass on the Lawn, 56 Highfield Drive, Sunday, August 11th, 2019. Is the applicant present? I know this is an event that has taken place, I think, before.
Motion to approve.
Okay, second? Mr. Brown, do you second that?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Application for special one-day wine and malt liquor license, Historic Highfield Incorporated, Holidays at Highfield Members Preview, 56 Highfield Drive, Tuesday, November 26th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Application for new second-hand dealer license, Karen McGrath, located at Home Again Consignment Shop, 94 East Falmouth Highway, East Falmouth. Is Ms. McGrath?
Yeah.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. If you just want to come, come on up and just, I know this is, we've approved a number of applications for this location, and if you just want to tell people, this is your opportunity, just tell them what you are going to have at this location.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to have an assortment of second-hand and vintage items for sale.
And I know she just said your name, but could you just introduce yourself, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Karen McGrath.
Thank you.
And do you, and you'll anticipate having your part of that shop up when?
It's already up.
Okay, great.
And so.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that, but I'm still astounded at how many businesses have fit into that little building.
And they're thriving.
Do you guys take turns, or how does that work?
No, they're all separate little booths, and everyone's doing really well, so.
That's great.
It looks so small from the front, but it's pretty long, I guess.
Yeah, she's got a lot of little spaces in there. Oh, good, good.
Okay, good luck.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, have a nice night.
We have application for new common victoria license, Devour, located at 352 Main Street, Falmouth. I see the applicant, Ms. Hirschfield. Do you want to come on up?
You can start, Hirschfield.
And introduce yourselves, please.
Only your name was on it, but I know it's a team effort, so. If you just introduce yourself and let us know what this establishment is.
Yes, my name is Anyes Hirschfield, this is my husband, Hollis Hirschfield, and we are opening up a Devour Artisan Eatery, which is going to be at 352 Main Street in Falmouth, where the old Min's Kitchen used to be, next to Hanush Jewelers. And it's going to be a breakfast and lunch spot, with signature sandwiches, smoothies, rice bowls, salads, homemade desserts, homemade sodas. Yeah, and we're hoping to open up at the end of this week, so I hope you all come by.
Right.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board?
No, congratulations, motion to approve.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a second?
I have a question, what time do you open for breakfast?
Um, I believe 8:00 A.M.
Oh.
Yeah.
Is that too late, you think?
That's kind of late for construction guys, yeah.
Yeah, we're debating that.
We're debating that, yeah.
We'll see how it goes.
Yes. Awesome, but there's good parking.
Do you have a second, Mr. Brown?
Yes, I do.
Okay, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Hi. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, under administrative orders, vote to exercise the right of first refusal for 42 Mill Farmway Unit 7, and assign said property to the Falmouth Housing Trust. Oh, is Carla?
Carla Ferroni's here.
Oh, wonderful.
Carl will make the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Carla.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Carla Ferroni, the Falmouth Housing Coordinator, and I'm here tonight to talk with you about one of our affordable homes at 42 Mill Farmway. It's a single-family home, and we've received notification from the lender's attorney that the home is going into foreclosure. And it's a requirement of the affordable housing restriction that the lender notify the town and give the town 30 days to exercise its right of first refusal to either purchase the unit or to find an eligible purchaser. We have received a letter of interest from the Falmouth Housing Trust, who has been a longtime monitor of this unit, and they're interested in purchasing the property and then turning around and selling it to an eligible purchaser. So, tonight, I'm here to ask you if you would assign the right to purchase this property to the Falmouth Housing Trust. And we're in support of that, and we have a, enjoy a good working partnership with the trust, and we highly support this.
Carla, a quick question, if I might, Madam Chair. The, what happens with the mortgage if it's right now in default?
So, with the mortgage, the, the lender can only foreclose on it and accept a, a price at auction equal to the amount of the remaining balance on the mortgage, probably plus some additional costs. But when, under this proposal with Falmouth Housing Trust, they would place a new deed restriction on it, so it would remain affordable in perpetuity.
And so, who's going to pay the amount of the mortgage that's outstanding at that point?
The Falmouth Housing Trust.
Okay, how much is that?
I don't have that information. I know that the maximum resale price of the unit is 189,000 and change, and that's a number that's derived out of a formula in the deed restriction.
Thank you.
I would make a motion that we allow the Falmouth Housing Trust to make that purchase on our behalf.
Second that motion?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. And thank you for really being, I know before you came, you know, we had some issues with,
you know, the timing being right at the last minute, so thank you for just being on top of these things, bringing them to us in a timely manner, so that we just make sure we protect the affordable housing that we do have for our community.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
And thanks to the Housing Trust for being ready to step in and do their great job.
She has a notice.
So, that's great.
Great, thank you. It's actually 7:26, I'm just going to fill in one other. We have notice of naming requests, request for plaque at Taft Playground, Woods Hole. Per the naming policy, the Board will consider action after August 5th, 2020. Is anyone here for, on this matter? Did you want to just come up and, I know you sent us some correspondence, but just so that folks know what this is all about. And then, as you know, as you're walking up, the policy of the Board is that we have to have the request, we have to wait a year, we generally wait a year, and then come back and take a vote on it. So, we wouldn't take a vote tonight.
Okay.
But this starts the time tolling, so.
Okay. I'm Barbara Morris from Woods Hole. I'm here to ask permission to put up a small plaque on a rock in Taft's Playground. It has been 30 years since the town of Woods Hole came together to build this remarkable playground in honor of my son, Taft Morris, who died in 1988 after being hit by a car. This year, we had another death, the project manager of the playground, Brian Cammoner, who made it all happen. And there are many people who want to honor both Brian and Taft, and now, 30 years later, people are asking for more information about what is Taft's Playground, who is Taft, the next generation? And so, we just wanted to have a small plaque put on the rock. As you enter Taft's Playground, there's a big, a big rock, and we wanted to put a small, simple plaque on the backside of it.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, I have a question.
Can I ask a question? Yeah, I think you're probably going to have the same question, which is, is this really a naming issue?
We're not really naming, we're not changing the name, we're just identifying the existing name.
Has this?
I'm not sure it was ever officially named.
Oh, okay.
Well, it is on the rock, on the, you know, when you come to the play, playground and park, and then walk on the path, there's Taft's Playground on the, on the rock. I don't know the history of that, how that happened.
Right. So, what I might suggest is we, we start the tolling now if we need it, but why don't we take a look and see if, if it went through the official process, and if so, then it's really just adding a plaque to something that's already gone through the process.
Yeah, right.
So, if that's something that the Board is comfortable with.
I would say so, I mean, I don't know anybody that's called it anything but Taft Playground.
Right, yeah, for a very long time, so, yes.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you so much, and we'll, we'll follow up with you and just let you know what we find out. If Mr. Duffy was here, he probably would remember himself, so.
Right.
Great. Okay, we have a public hearing.
I didn't find the notice, sorry.
Okay, let me just see, I just need to find the notice.
I think it's up there. Put that in the box.
I know, that would be great if it did. Here we go, hold on. Can you just have the public hearing have the notice?
Uh.
We need the notice, it's not in my packet or Megan's, apparently, she's got to read it.
And I would suggest that we delay the public hearing until Mr. Jones has a chance to return.
Yes, I just have to read the public hearing, and then that's what we will do, because...
I see, right.
Checking my materials as well.
Mr. Borselli might have a copy.
Yeah. Mr. Borselli, do you have a copy of the notice of hearing by any chance?
Let's see.
I don't see it in here.
Ah, thank you so much.
There you go. Wonderful, thank you very much. So, we have a public hearing notice, this is a revised public hearing notice, the Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Section 240-77 Wetland Regulations of the zoning bylaws of the town of Falmouth on Monday, August 5th, 2019, at 7:30 P.M. in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on application of the, of Robert Sperry for permission to construct a fixed pier that will extend approximately 92 feet beyond mean high water in the waters of Eel Pond located at 134 Antler Shore Drive. Area affected is Eel Pond. Interested parties may review the file on this hearing at the Selectmen's Office per order of the Board of Selectmen. Publication dates July 19th, Friday, July 26th, in the Falmouth Enterprise. And Mister, as Mr. Brown was saying, we really need to have a fourth member of the Board of Selectmen, Turn, Selectman Jones will be back, he had to go to a meeting, he should be back probably by quarter of eight. So, I would take a motion to table this hearing until Mr. Jones returns.
So moved.
Have the concurrence of the applicant, or we just decide that?
We can just do it.
He's saying, his hands are saying he concurs, Mr. Borselli, anyway, so.
Very good, I move that we delay till Mr. Jones returns.
Okay, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. So, we'll return to that as soon as he gets back. Returning to administrative orders, vote to accept donation amount of $500 from the T-Ticket Civic Association to the Veterans Donation Account. So moved.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Unfortunately, there's a typo in the agenda, it should be, the amount should be 3,500.
Wow.
So, do we need to put that, we can amend that?
We can amend, verbally, tonight.
That's a good thing to have to change, right? So, I won't do anything to the paperwork, I will just, do we need to wait for new paperwork?
Um, we will need to have the paperwork reflect the correct amount of 3,500.
Okay, so I will just sign it, and you guys can do whatever you're going to do.
Well, that's a pretty large gift, thank you very much to the T-Ticket Civic Association.
It is, and just so the public is aware, this is a gift from the Falmouth Road Race to pay for the cost of the beach staff attendance at the annual banquet ceremony, so.
Um, you jumped ahead, we were at T-Ticket. T-Ticket Civic Association.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, we're on C and not D, you're right.
Okay, so it's C, 500?
Yep, C is, that's correct, as printed.
Okay, so thank you to the T-Ticket Civic Association. Obviously, any donation for veterans is well-appreciated and well-deserved, so thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And now, we're on C, vote to accept donation, the amount of 500, it should be 3,500 dollars from the Beach Department Donation Account for Lifeguard Awards Night. Okay, we've heard why that needs to, the amount needs to change, do I have a motion?
Uh, so moved, and thank you to the Road Race.
Yes, and this is a perfect year, I don't know that there's any other year that would be more appropriate after what we just heard, so. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thanks, thanks to the Road Race, they do a lot.
And I actually think there is some paperwork that has the right amount, so, it's fine. Thank you. Great. We have approve Community Preservation Committee applications, various sources. First is to affirm Public Works' application for CPC funding for design of North Falmouth Bike Way Extension. Mr. Jack?
And before we get started?
Yes.
There was a question about the wording, affirm rather than approve. I called Diane, and she said, that's just a glitch, just a thing that...
It's a synonym, it's considered to be the same.
Right.
Action by the Board.
Right.
Approval.
Right.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I'm here to present a CPC application from the Public Works Department to the Community Preservation Committee for extension of the last segment of the Shining Sea Bike Way. It's a very brief presentation, as a matter of fact, probably the shortest one I ever made, so I wouldn't get too comfortable. Anyway, it's to construct a 10-to-12-foot wide bike path, it's going to be .7 miles in length from County Road to the town line, and it also includes the County Road parking lot up in that area, which is presently a dirt parking lot, so this will have a number of different improvements for that parking area. We intend to work closely with the town of Bourne on this. They have been looking at this initiative also for a number of years. Their extension is going to be in a range of about six miles. They are presently working on Phase 1 of four phases, which is starting up at the canal area and coming south. If we are successful with this application, we will be working with them in order to switch over to Phase 4, which is the last section, which abuts Falmouth directly, so that we would be designing and permitting those two sections concurrently. Full design for the CPC application is $694,000. The actual construction of the bike path segment itself would be done under Mastot, at least it's anticipated that way, at a cost of about 5.4 million dollars for this segment alone. So, why are we doing this? It provides a safe, natural, environmental recreation experience for all people of all ages and abilities, this is going to be ADA accessible. Expand our recreational inventory and provide for a multimodal, multimodal just meaning multi, multiple types of transportation, namely, bikes and pedestrians and wheelchairs and things of that nature here. Uh, multi-jurisdictional, meaning Falmouth and Bourne and the state, uh, recreational corridor from Vineyard Sound, hopefully all the way to the Cape Cod Canal. Once Bourne completes their area, so the existing bike path now in Falmouth is ten point seven miles, uh, proposed extension's gonna be point seven miles, proposed for Bourne is gonna be about six and a half miles total. So the future total of a contiguous bike path all the way from the canal down to Vineyard Sound would be eighteen miles. Primary purpose of this is recreation, I put that down as the primary, it does have an alternate purpose of commuters, uh, the users predominantly are gonna be cyclists, pedestrians, hikers, rollerblading, and cross-country skiing. What I do like to say here is the fundamental problem that we, I have every time it snows, is the first phone call that comes in is, not maybe the first, but one of the phone calls that comes in is, how come you haven't plowed the bike path? So as soon as we plow a bike path, the second call comes in and says, why'd you plow the bike path? Because I wanted to cross-country ski. So we can't win. So this is County Road, uh, at the terminus of the existing bike path, so this is looking south, you can see the bike path with the yellow line, and then on the left of that is a fence which is required by Mastot for a physical separation barrier between a path and an active train line. And then just to the left of that fence, you can see the two railroad tracks that are still there, so this is taken, the picture on the right is taken from about the same spot, looking north off of County Road, so this is where the proposed bike path would be going. Not quite sure exactly which side of this, uh, track system it's going to be on, a lot of it's gonna depend on the existing right-of-way and the various obstacles, there are a number of drop-off slopes on this point seven mile, so it is gonna be challenging. This is a Cape Cod Commission map showing the existing bike path network on Cape Cod, and under their planning efforts, uh, the areas in red are desired paths that they would like to achieve. So on the left side of the map is, uh, the section that goes all the way from the canal down to our terminus, and then that green line up there at the top near the gray area, that is the Cape Cod Canal, but the reason that it is green, it also has a bike path on it, so it's a designated path as far as that is. And that's it.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yep.
Uh, what about the parking lot, did you, you mentioned that the parking lot was gonna be paved, I think, did you say?
We'll propose to pave it, yes.
And will we get any expansion, is there any more room to get any more parking in there?
I think, well, it's, it's pretty tight, um, logistically, but I think we can be creative on what we do up there.
Okay.
So we're gonna try to enhance the parking.
I wonder if the neighbor would wanna get rid of any land up there, because I know he was very nice about allowing us to have access to do the, uh, the water station that's planned for on that north Falmouth, uh.
Right, there are, there are existing access rights off of that parking lot that we wouldn't be able to interfere with, so there, there will be legal issues, um, and legal mechanisms that we can look at toward that, but they've been very agreeable thus far, so.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, I have a question about the cost, so it's, did I see that correctly, for a tenth of a mile, it's a million dollars, average?
For the.
If you're talking about ten million for point seven mile, I mean, I'm just, is that about right in terms of the cost?
I would say overall, for the entire length of the run going all the way through Bourne, if it was funded and constructed at the same time, you're probably looking at an actual per mile cost in the range of six million, six million plus.
Per mile?
Per mile.
Wow.
It's going to be very challenging, there are a number of different wetlands issues, the, the section one that they're currently working on and section four are the easy parts, it's two and three that are the tough parts. Uh, and our particular section does call for a, um, bridge to go across the existing train bridge, um, on Old Main, so that's what the rest of the path will be looking at, are the equivalent of bridges instead of at-grade crossings. An at-grade crossing requires two ramps, one to go down and one to come up onto the other side of the path, and then they have to directly interact with traffic. I think that the, the logic here is to try to have as many above-grade crossings as possible in order to make it a more, a much more safe and pleasant experience.
And so, a follow-up, so where, this is for design money at this point in time, what's the plan generally in terms of the rest of the funds, where was, where's that gonna come from?
That would be through Mastot STIP program, that's S-T-I-P, that's a State Transportation Improvement Program, it runs concurrently with the local TIP program, which is the Transportation Improvement Program for us. Um, but they have a separate segment on there, uh, that is for state initiatives, and phase one, which is currently under design for Bourne, has already been placed into that program, uh, under Mastot. So we will be doing the same thing, and hopefully not waiting for, at least my goal would be, not to wait for all four phases of Bourne to be completed before we actually construct it, why? Because we can get a couple, at least a couple of miles or more of valuable bike path in, in the interim, just because I believe it's probably gonna be a fairly significant amount of time for that middle stretch of Bourne to get permitted. So we'll be looking to kinda segment it off with ours and Bourne's phase four in order to get those moving, uh, more immediately, and I think the state would be agreeable to that too, because it pieces off the, the whole project instead of one lump sum.
Is that wider than the current bike path, 'cause I know we've been trying to make things, I'm picturing if you're gonna have it be a commuting path, you're gonna knock over a bunch of people walking, unless you have sort of maybe two lanes, or?
Right, it says ten to twelve, the only reason for the ten is, uh, throughout the corridor area, there are gonna be physical constraints, uh, because we can't go too close to the tracks, and there's only so much right-of-way that we may be able to obtain. So it might narrow down a couple of times, you know, to ten, but we're looking at a minimum twelve-foot bike path.
Okay, thank you.
That's the question I was gonna ask, thank you.
Great, any other questions?
No, I think that's it.
And just a thank you to the DPW, I know this is something that, um, I see, um, Patty and Leonard Johnson, I know that this, you know, they've really been pushing this forward in the collaboration and connecting with, with, um, DPW to bring this forward, um, you know, I know is something that a lot of people are, um, looking forward to, taking that next step, so thank you.
And I, and I too would take the opportunity to thank them both for all their efforts, and they have agreed, um, to work with us as well very closely during the process as liaison with the Bike Ways Committee.
And is Patty your first call, when you have, when it snows, is she the first, says why haven't you?
First call, second call.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I thought, thank you very much.
Great.
Um, do I have, uh, a motion to approve?
I make a motion, we approve the DPW plan to design the bike path extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, uh, we are gonna re- return back now, you were absolutely precise, uh, we're gonna return back now to the wetland hearings, I've previously read the notice for, um, so come right up, Mr. Borselli.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, for the record, my name is Michael Borselli, Falmouth Engineering, and I represent the applicant, Rob Sperry, Mr. Sperry is in the audience this evening, um, he's a rel- he's recently acquired the property and is, um, uh, before you tonight, requesting a special permit to reconstruct an existing, uh, licensed dock at the property. Um, before I make my presentation, I just wanted to, uh, procedurally, um, discuss this matter of quorum and the supermajority matter that I have.
Yes.
My understanding is, and I was in- informed by your staff that, and I know this, um, I, we need all four votes for this to be, uh, moved forward, so I'd like to make my presentation, but I'd like to reserve the right, if necessary, to withdraw without prejudice if it appears as though I'm not going to obtain all four votes. I think this is a very favorable project, and I didn't wanna delay my client further, but a denial would delay him for two years, and I think a few weeks would be easier than a couple of years on my applicant, but I, I don't see why, I don't wanna be presumptuous, but I think this is a good project, so I just wanted to have an opportunity to withdraw if I need to.
Let me just ask if, if anyone is aware, um, and I'm looking mostly at, um, Doug Jones, 'cause he has all this knowledge, but, um, that there's any problem with that procedure.
I think it just be, it would have to be a de novo hearing, uh, application, if we withdraw it without prejudice, because we'd have to start all over again so that all five of us would have.
Sure. Understood that, understand that, yes.
Fine, no.
So with that, um, I'd like to show you the plans. So Mr. Sperry owns the property at one thirty-four Antler Shore, it's a, uh, a residential property with a single-family dwelling landscaping, driveway lawn areas, and if you look closely at this drawing, you will see two, uh, two piers. One is the proposed pier, which is more centered on the lot, one is the existing licensed pier. Uh, ironically, in nineteen ninety-five, this very board, uh, granted a special permit for this existing pier when the then-owner was going through what they call an amnesty period, uh, an- amnesty licensing period, they did not have any license, and at that time, they went forward to go on record with this pier, to put it on record and get a license. Um, at that time, they also received, uh, negative determination from the Conservation Commission. Uh, this pier that exists now is substandard in a lot of ways, um, you can see the end basically terminates at the peat shelf, and it's very difficult to tie a boat to the end, you can't, you can't tie alongside, there's no T, the water's very shallow. It's very close to the, the common boundary just to the north. The walkway itself is a low-profile walkway over the salt marsh, it's, um, dilapidated in that the decking is all loose and splintering, it's unsafe. Um, so, um, very early on, we, uh, had some, um, informal consultations with Conservation Commission staff and were given some advice, and we proceeded with the notice of intent application. A part of our application included a, uh, shellfish survey, uh, that was prepared and it's included in your package, the s- shellfish survey results indicated that there's no significant densities of shellfish in this area. The bottom in this area is mucky, uh, and anoxic and not suitable for shellfish. Uh, once we were on with that information, we proceeded and we had a review by Conservation, the proposed pier has been shifted to the center of the lot, it has been, uh, revised, uh, and changed such that it has a T, um, at the end, so that the boat would tie parallel to shore in water that's deeper than the current dock, while not as deep as we'd like it to be, it is an improvement, and given the fact that there's no viable shellfish habitat, uh, the Conservation Commission, um, saw fit that they could issue an order of conditions. There were other improvements that helped them come to that conclusion, including the fact that the pier is now proposed to be elevated, the requisite six feet above the salt marsh by, uh, Division of Marine Fisheries. It is being fitted with the through-flow decking, which allows sunlight penetration, so the, and it's also being, uh, proposed to be, um, constructed using an augering method where, um, the actual pilings, if you will, are augered into the, um, salt marsh instead of, uh, excavated, so there's less impact to the salt marsh. So this is an effort to try to, uh, install this as, as, uh, surgically, if that's the right word, to minimize disruption to the salt marsh. Public access will be provided by the separation, um, so all in all, we think it's a, a vast improvement over what exists, and, um, if you s- if you also feel that way and issue us a favorable decision, we'll proceed to the next step, which is a chapter ninety-one license for this location.
Thank you.
And that sums it up, I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions from the board? Thank you.
Uh, as I understand, the standard for depth of water should be about three feet where the dock actually would be?
Um, under ideal conditions, yes, but, um.
I thought that actually wasn't ideal, I thought that was actually pretty much a general guideline for the Conservation Commission.
For a new dock, yes, for a new dock, but since this.
For a new dock. How far, uh, would you have to go to hit that three feet?
Um, if you look closely at the plan, I'll try to zoom in, you will see.
I think it's right about where the L is of Eel.
Yeah, right out here, and, um, that would have an impact on navigation, it would also violate the Army Corps of Engineers twenty-five percent rule.
That was what I was gonna then raise that question.
So we're sort of stuck between a rock and a hard place here, trying to do the best we can to make a bad situation better.
How big is the boat that's proposed to be here and how, what's its, uh, water depth that it's gonna?
Um, there isn't a specific boat proposed, but, uh, the boat would be typical of s- uh, r- smaller recreational boats with outboard engines that have the ability to trim up, so that the draft of the propellers is actually not the limiting factor, it would be the keel, I would say you'd be looking at, you know, a recreational boat in the length range of twenty to twenty-six feet, but we don't have a specific boat in mind. There was a condition that only one bulk can tie to the structure.
I, I saw that, I was a little concerned that boats, plural, kept being used in the condition, and then later on, it did say there's only gonna be one boat, I'd feel more comfortable if we actually limited the size, and if the stipulation, suggestion is it's gonna be a tip-up engine, it'd be much more comfortable knowing this is gonna be an engine that can get tipped up to avoid, you know, if it's in a foot and a half of water.
At low tide.
At low tide, um, but the tidal range in Eel Pond isn't, I'm not sure.
It's about, it's about fifteen to eighteen inches.
Right, I mean, it's about a foot and a half, so, at the best, it's gonna be in three feet of water, maybe three and a half feet of water at the best, and to have a non-tip-up engine and a twenty-six-foot boat there, I think would be inappropriate, so I'd be, uh, going to suggest that as a possibility once we get around to our decisions.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
Did you have any other questions?
You, you said that it's close to the borderline, how close? Can you give us an approximate distance?
This exist- this existing dock is approximately seven feet off of the property line at this point.
'Cause there's certainly in vari- there are a whole bunch of things that you're listing that are huge improvements of the existing conditions, and certainly getting away from the property line that, uh, of seven feet is that, is one of them.
Okay. Mister Brown, did you have any?
Uh, no, I didn't have any questions, I read it carefully and I understood, I was gonna ask the same question about the water depth, but it does seem like the, uh, the least, least bad option.
Great, so if, nothing else from the board, um, I would open, um, up to any public comments, anyone who wants to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who wants to speak in opposition?
Will we close the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Are you okay for us to proceed, Mr. Borselli?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, any other, uh, so you have the, um, recommendation that it would be, um, tip-up?
I guess the first findings are that it is an improvement from our existing condition because of property line, uh, because of, it's actually in quite a bit deeper water than it was existing, uh, the current pier is dangerous and, uh, does not allow public access the way this one will. Uh, I think also the, the, um, light permeability of the new deck is a, is an improvement, um.
I would, another finding would be that although the water depth is not what we would like, there's no shellfish in the area, so.
Right, and the findings from both my shellfish ward and, or the survey and from the harbor masters, it does not impede navigation in order to have a shellfish issue.
Right.
Right. Any other findings? Okay, and in terms of any, um, other limitations that we would wanna put?
Uh, I would be interested in putting a limitation on the size of boat and with a, uh, tilt-up engine available to it, so I guess it.
Size of twenty-five or?
I, I think twenty-four feet and a tilt-up engine, a tilt-up, I'm not sure we need to preclude that it's outboard, inboard, inwards, you can tilt up, and so, I'm not sure we need to say it's one of that type, I just wanna make sure the engine can be tilted up in a way to minimize damage to, uh, I guess the, we don't have shellfish, but we could have yellow grass, or to at least stirring up the muck that's there, as, I think it's, as I was saying, anorexic, but we don't wanna get that stirred up too much.
And can I ask a question just about the, um, the difference between twenty-four or twenty-six, does it, does anyone have a particular, 'cause it sounded like twenty-six was sort of the, the largest that could be accommodated at this, in an appropriate way at this, um.
I guess I, I'd really be more comfortable with twenty, but I was trying to be generous.
I will say that as a boater, I think when you're in that range, tw- twenty-six is just about what it takes to get around Vineyard Sound in a choppy sea, so to limit to twenty-four kinda, it's, it's sort of the breaking point there. So I would say twenty-six, I don't think they're gonna buy something that they can't use.
I, there's no sense where the next docks and boats are here in the presentation, though, there's, it's nothing listed.
Do you have a locust?
There is a dock to the north.
And across.
I don't know if I can speak, um.
Yeah, yes, please.
Um, uh, this is in a very fully developed, uh, boating community, there's a, there's a dock right next door that was just beyond our survey here, in a, o- upstream, if you will, there's several other docks that have the type of boat that we're discussing, um, having here. And I agree from experience on the twenty-six versus twenty-four and the waves, I know the failing between the two type boats.
It's a real cutoff point.
Yeah, I guess my, with the depth of the water, I guess my concern would be a little bit more about the, the motor than the extra two feet, although I understand that changes sort of what, you know, changes some of the.
Changing around in wind.
It's also gonna be a concern for the owner to not have their engine in the muck anyway, so.
They're not gonna want that, so.
Not good for it, right.
Yeah. So.
So I'd be okay with a condition of, uh, one tilt-up engine, sixty foot, twenty-six feet as the maximum.
Okay, great.
Okay, um, anything else? Okay, do I have a, do I close this hearing? We were to close, so now we just ma- vote our recommendation, right? Okay.
So make the motion with those findings and those conditions.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, and returning to, um, administrative orders, we have approved Conservation Department, um, excuse me, approved Recreation Department application for CPC funding to rehabilit- habi- rehabilitate the North Falmouth Tennis Courts. Mister Olenick? Welcome.
Evening, Boyd, thank you for having me.
Ready to go.
I'm gonna give you a slight presentation of, um, the tennis courts and what they look like, and, never use this here, so I'm gonna see if I can.
Who are you?
Got my glasses on so I can see what I'm doing.
No one knows you, Joe, but can you tell us your name, can you tell the folks at home who you are?
Um, Joe Olenick, Recreation Director, um, here to talk about approval, hopefully for, uh, CPC grant for the North Falmouth Tennis Courts, um, which is Nye Park, um, it's a great complex as of right now, other than the condition that it's in, and it's in, um, very poor condition as far as the tennis courts and the, um, pickleball groups will not play. So hopefully what this will do is increase the capacity by changing two of the, um, tennis courts into straight tennis courts, no pickleball on them, one of the tennis courts will be converted to four pickleball courts, we'll still keep the basketball court, and we'll also have a tennis backboard, um, so hopefully I'll just show you a little bit of what's going on.
Just click or use the.
Ah, here we go, um, the tennis courts, with the exception of Swift Park, are the only courts in Falmouth, um, that can be, um, are not available to use, 'cause Swift Park's tennis courts are in great shape, uh, but they're also shared with pickleball. So you have four pickleball courts on the two tennis courts, and it has developed into a lot of conflict between pickleball and tennis, and we receive calls roughly every day, um, people of one of each group complaining about it. Uh, pickleball has four groups with about seventy players in each group, and that is only the players that we know of, there are many other, um, summer residents and town residents that are part of the groups, um, and they as well need to share the courts. and they are overwhelmed with pickleball and tennis, and as I said, we have scheduling issues. We get calls about complaints roughly every day, and, um, some of these conflicts have resulted in near, I hate to say, fistfights between, um, senior citizens over the use of these courts, and it's become a, a real problem, um...
And they're armed with rackets.
Yes, not with rackets. Um, conditions at Nye Park, these courts were repaired four years ago, um, and right now, what you'll see in the pictures coming up are in terrible shape. The repair did not work. Um, post-tension concrete, which is what was used at Swift Park, guaranteed for twenty-five years, and, um, roughly only have to paint them one or two more times after that. Um, this is one of the, the courts at Nye, and, uh, you can see there's a big crack, and there are other cracks in all the other courts. Um, paint is chipped off, concrete is chipped away, um, leaving high and low spots that people can trip over. Um, more spots, um, water definitely gathers on them. You can see in one of the pictures, there's, um, grass growing in them, um... But when I was there, tennis players were playing, pickleball players will not play there. Um, this is part of the basketball court, and then one of the cracks is full of grass. Um, so they're in very poor, poor shape. Um, the only issue that we have, um, with this project, and I think it's very important, is unfortunately, the cost is gonna be relatively high as compared to what the last couple, um, rehabs have been. This slide will show you, the basketball court is still there, the one tennis court converted into four pickleball courts, and then the two new tennis courts. Um, the important thing to this is it will separate tennis and pickleball, finally give us some dedicated pickleball courts, which pickleball community is desperately looking for, to avoid conflicts, so they can play pretty much every day, all times of the day, um, so, and, um, unfortunately, the cost of this will probably be four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, which is quite substantial. Um, I do hope to try to look for some other funding to try to help with it, um, but it is a very important project that I think the town really needs, um, to separate tennis and pickleball, so that they can, um, continue to play, and we can avoid this conflict that we have with it. And as we know, Swift Park, it's a great post-tension concrete, just lasts for ever and ever and ever, and we won't have to worry about these courts again for a really long time if we do this project.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Olenek?
Can you give us a feel as to how many tennis courts we do have in town?
Yeah, the three there, we have two in Woods Hole, uh, we have the two at, um, Swift Pa- Swift Park that are town-owned. Um, there are some courts on some of the schools, and the eight tennis courts at the high school, the, the tennis courts at the high school are roughly the same shape as these, cracks and grass grown in, in all the courts. And the tennis players refuse to go play there, um, because of the condition of the courts and, um...
But the, the, the high school ones are in that bad shape also.
Yeah, and I believe the high school has them on their capital plan in three years to repair those.
Any other questions?
No, I've seen that North Falmouth Court, it's pretty bad.
Yeah, and...
We've been patching it for years, and it really needs to be redone.
And the Woods Hole courts are in the same shape, and, um, hopefully, if we can continue moving along with these projects, they will be pretty much next on my list of things to try to accomplish.
Well, I mean, the, oh, I'm sorry.
Is this price tag partly because we are breaking it? I mean, if it were just tennis, it would be cheaper? Or is it really just the resurfacing?
If it was just tennis, if it was just redoing what was there, it would probably be a little cheaper, but doing the pickleball courts, you know, it'd certainly add some with a little bit more fencing and, um, and post-tension concrete is more expensive than if you did it with asphalt. Asphalt just tends to crack, you know, relatively quickly, and you have to repair it, and obviously, the repairs don't work, and then you have to repair it again, and, you know, the idea is to do it once and not have to worry about it again.
For the future projects, the high school one may be done to a school department, and maybe the, some of these other ones can come back at a little bit lower cost, but not too much. I mean, it's gonna be still, okay?
Any other questions? Okay, anyone have a motion?
I would move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, um, we have approved Conservation Department and the Three Hundred Committee application for CPC funding for the invasive species management at the Little Pond Conservation Area. Hi, John.
Hi, um, I apologize, I do not have a PowerPoint presentation for this, uh, proof request, but the Conservation Commission and the Three Hundred Committee, um, would like approval to submit a CPC application to conduct our invasive species removal at the Little Pond, uh, Conservation Area. Um, we are finishing up our master plan that was delayed for a couple of years, um, after we discovered the presence of an oil tank. We are currently working with our contractor to wrap that master plan up, and our phase one of restoring the parcel would be to conduct an invasive species management program. The site is heavily infested, um, right now, and our, um, master plan contractor did give us an opinion of probable cost that is in the range of four hundred thousand. We are currently ac- uh, currently and will be actively seeking, uh, additional quotes to provide to the CPC during their review process, so, that is our request.
Great, thank you. Sue, and then Doug.
How long does the treatment last? I mean, how often are we gonna have to spend?
It's a three-year treatment program. Every, um, invasive species management program that I have seen is a, a three-year treatment process, so basically, they'll come in, year one, they'll treat.
Yep.
And they have to come back for at least two additional years to make sure that everything is, um, eradicated.
Thank you.
What are the primary, uh, invasives of?
We have spotted knappweed, and knotweed is really bad on the site.
Japanese knotweed, yeah.
So, that's very labor-intensive to get rid of.
Right.
And the money is not for a survey, but to actually do the job?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Correct, and, and to, um, install, uh, things like root barriers, so the invasives on the adjacent site, not controlled by the town, won't creep into our site in the future.
Smart. And just, um, I'm sure that, that you probably have, but has any, um, has any sort of outreach been done to the, um, the folks who manage that adjacent property to see if there's any, you know, sort of work that they're wi- you know, willing or able to undertake to kind of help, uh, the process along?
We're gonna be looking at that lease and reaching out to them. They have provided a letter of support for our project.
Great, just 'cause it's all their money, too. It's all of our money, so anything they can do that helps them as well, so...
And this is phase one, you know, phase two, we'd be seeking funding in twenty twenty-one for the creation of the parking area and the loop trails, some finally getting to, um, implement some of the elements. We're so excited about that were identified in the master plan.
Great.
You know, uh, at our recent East Falmouth Village Association meeting, it wasn't on our agenda, but one of our members, Ali Zafrou, came and said, "Everyone should be on the lookout for this Japanese knotweed and try to get rid of it as much as possible, because it's really invasive," and I thought that was a great thing to bring up, and I think we really need a town-wide awareness, but that's one that really, it's, it's a spreading root, and it's so invasive that you can't even throw it in your weed pile. You gotta put it in bags and take it and put it in the trash. How do you get rid of it when you're on a big job?
Um...
In a special dumpster, probably, or to an incinerator.
That was, that's what the root barrier is for, knotweed.
Right, yep.
Thank you.
Well, great, thank you.
Do you have a motion?
I move approval of the Conservation Department and the Three Hundred Committee application for CPC funding.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, John.
I just wanted to say, um, Kathleen Haynes asked me, she caught me out in the hallway, and she just asked me if distributed things before happening.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Um, we have, uh, number four, approve Edward Marks Building Advisory Committee application for CPC funding to issue an RFP requesting responses from professional preservationists to develop a historic structures report for the building. Swann?
Uh, good evening, Barbara Wand. I'm the chair of the advisory committee, uh, that we're discussing, and, um, I believe you should all have received a, um, a draft RFP that we are preparing. That should have been given to ahead of time. Um, in view of PowerPoint, given how much we're springing towards deadline, uh, a word document will suffice. I hope, this is just to give you context for the RFP. That's the intention. Yeah, well, this only goes to the other side, that only goes to, yeah. Um, so, uh, so, we've only been meeting since, uh, July tenth, and that's why I'm referring to a sprint. Uh, we thought it, um, advantageous for us to make a full court press to try to move towards CPC funding, which would, um, of course, not be released until after Springtown meeting in, uh, twenty twenty. So, what we're talking about in this report, an historic structures report, is a well-understood document in historic preservation circles, and what I reference in this just one-page summary is i- in fact, well-spelled out by the Secretary of Interior, um, in great detail. And it acts as the foundation for, um, nationally speaking, this is not a local issue at all. Um, an historic structural report helps to provide the foundation for future thinking, for future phasing of any projects that might happen, and provides the town, I think, with a blueprint for going forward over a longer period of time than any of us are expecting to be involved. We, we wanna leave behind a cohesive report. Right now, we're working with, um, records that we pulled, cobbled together from a variety of sources, and given the importance of this building as the oldest municipal building in Falmouth, and something that served as the poorhouse for a hundred and sixty years, we owe it respect, and we owe it, um, a place in our local history, which it currently doesn't have. So, we developed this RFP, which of course would not be issued until after a positive outcome at town meeting in, in the spring, but it helped us to, for the committee's, um, purposes to focus our, our energy and to spell out i- i- in what you have already received on pages ten and eleven. You'll see the scope of work that is entailed in an hist- historic structures report. So, it was an organizing principle for us to, to, uh, work around, um, and I wanna thank everybody on the committee uh, for a really tenacious effort to get us as far as we are right now. For those people who don't know who's on the committee, Mr. Brown is our liaison to the selectmen, and in the audience, Ed Haddad, Chair of the Historical Commission, Christian Valley, where Mike Duffany, God forbid I overlook anybody else who came. Uh, so, tho- yeah, of seven people, we have five people here tonight, um, participating in this. Do you have any questions based on just this attempt to kind of bring you up to where we are now?
I guess my procedural one I have is that I believe because it is a committee that we have appointed, that they can go to CPC as a representative of the town, as opposed to if it had been an ad hoc committee, they would not have the authority to do so. I don't think that we have to have a department running.
That would be our intention, um, the selectmen, and that would be the planning department, um, working with Tom Bott and Cory Pacheco to, uh, be the department sponsor. I think the CPC is, uh, requesting that.
So, it would be the planning department.
No, they, the CPC, uh, I spoke to Carol Sutherland today, Julian, and, and she said that if we are Board of Selectmen-appointed, that the Board of Select, that's where the authority rests, um, for the approval or not.
Right, but we still sort of have to have a, which department is...
You don't need to be sponsored.
You don't need to be sponsored.
You can do it yourself. You just need us to recommend it.
But they do need to have a department that's actually going to be overseeing the procurement.
Right. The issue is, right, the issue is the procurement, right, because we, we, there has to be some town entity that's connected to procurement.
Well, Cory Pacheco, as you know, is, is assisting us technically, so...
So, it would be, it would be the planning department with the assistance of Cory and obviously Tom, but, um, so just to, you know, we do have to...
We have to get that signature, yeah.
Yes, just so that, and it's, it, we've had that kind of come up a little bit more than we have in the past, 'cause so many, you know, wonderful projects, folks are looking to kind of go forward with CPC, but the, you know, anything that's going to have that town, you know, the procurement for the town does have to be connected to the town, 'cause at the end of the day, the town would be left holding the bag if anything went wrong. So, that's, it's not that we don't appreciate the expertise and, um, dedication, it's just that we have that, that responsibility, so...
I think we do it to be sensitive to how many projects we're putting on into each department and making sure that we're not putting five different projects on the planning department to...
Thank you.
Keep an eye on what they're going on, and...
And that...
Exactly, i- i- if I may, I just, I just think it's very helpful for managing our resources and for priority setting that we not just have sort of a free-for-all of any committee that wants to submit a grant application, submits it and it goes to CPC in town meeting, um, and...
Oh, never.
We're, you know, we understand...
There's no free-for-all.
We, we understand this proposal, and we're supportive of it, but it's just a, you know, I think a practice that we wanna encourage the board to make sure that there's department resources planned for if we do get the grant, that it can actually take place in a reasonable timeframe.
Yep, so, any other, any other thoughts or questions?
In my understanding, it's that there is bandwidth within the planning department for this one.
Yes.
Yes, we have spoken to them about that, but there is indeed.
Okay.
I don't have a question, I have just a comment that this is really the first step for this committee, so, I would like to, uh, hope that you would move approval. I don't know if it's appropriate for me to do so as the liaison.
You're only the liaison, you can do it. You don't have any vested interest in it.
All right, then, I move approval.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
That was incredibly fast work.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you. Okay, next we have, um, I believe, actually, uh, administrative order number five we're not going forward with tonight. Um, do, oh, Jennifer left. I don't know that that was meant for us to read that into the record. We don't know. Okay, so we'll just hold that. Number six, approve Recreation Department application for CPC funding for Gov. Fuller Field Rehabilitation Two project. Welcome.
Hello, Jan. Hope you guys are still doing well. Uh, we are here to seek approval, um, for another additional, um, hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars to the Gov. Fuller Field project. Um, there's been a few issues along the way, um, that we would like to get corrected, um, some due to, um, nobody bidding on the last part of the project that was bid out, and through conversations with, um, town engineer and, um, town finance director, it was suggested that we go with a general contractor to help pull the whole project together. Um, as before, if it was bidded out separately, third bidder might not like what second bidder did, and then we're gonna have an issue, and the general contractor can pull it all together. So, initially, the request was for, um, some cost changes, 'cause it's been a couple of years, um, and now the money is to be split sixty-five thousand roughly towards a general contractor, and the rest towards upgrading some of the, um, netting and stuff like that, um, that was planned, and, um, hopefully, we can get the whole project done. If not, we're looking at the visitors' bleachers as being the first thing to be eliminated and then added at a future, a future date.
Great, okay, any questions about this? And it's been a, sort of a long time in the...
Yeah, and, um, Bob Curtis is with me, and he's been pushing this for the last two weeks. Roughly every day, there's three or four, five emails back and forth between engineering forums and firms, and Bob, and he's worked really hard to try to pull this whole thing together.
Any questions about this?
No, I think it's good.
Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, did he have a reason for skipping number five?
Yes, um, I think that that, so, number five, Joe, did Kathleen speak to you before she left?
She left us these notes.
Yes, I just don't ever wanna read it into the record. I don't know if she gave it to us just personally.
No, I, I have not spoken with Kathleen.
Okay, I did, I did speak with, um, Kathleen Haynes, who's the, uh, Chair of the Commission on Disabilities, and she is not going forward at this time with her request for the CPC funding for design, um, funding for an inclusive play space. Um, not that that project isn't gonna go forward, but, um, just some, some oth- a number of issues that it seems that it's not the time to go forward on it.
Right, uh, I've heard some of those, and, um, I would, wanted to speak with her, but we were just never able to make that connection, and, um, in the long run, I think it's probably a good, good decision, 'cause it's a huge project, and there's many parts that need to be pulled together and to make it work without any second guessing. I think this is a, a good move, and...
Yes, and so, she's, so she withdrew that tonight, and it's, it just speaks to that other issue that we just talked about, which we've had you come up tonight and talk about two particular projects.
Right.
Um, you know, one that is a, uh, the number's still up there, almost a half a million dollar project. So, um, you know, it's that same, goes to that same issue of department heads sort of being, um, overextended, 'cause this is in addition to all the other work that you do. So, perhaps a timing issue that will benefit the, the project all around, but she is withdrawing it for tonight, so you won't be asked to speak on it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I believe it was a typo, the thirty-five hundred on F we have already done.
Yeah, it was in there twice, right.
Yep, okay, that's fine. Okay, that's fine. All right, under 745, Business Report from the Historical Commission. Welcome.
You might have to help me, Peter. How do I get at my presentation? It should be loaded, I'm told. Thank you for having us. My name is Ed Haddad. I'm the Chairman of the Historical Commission. And what I'm here to do is give you an update as to what we're doing and what we do. It's going to be a little bit of a story of transformation and evolution. Transformation of the Historical Districts Commission and the evolution of the Historic Districts Commission and combined with the Historical Commission to where we are today. So, just to give you... So this is our members, our membership today. I think we have a great board. I know we have a great board, as a matter of fact. Like I said, myself is the chairman. Christian Valli is here, who is the vice chairman. Chris Warner's here as an, as an architect, is a secretary. Annie Dean is a newish member. Cara Foley is our brand-new member. She's in the audience. Lee Drescher is not here. She is our alternate and we still have an alternate position. And of course, we are blessed with the expertise of Cory Pacheco as our advisor. I'd also like to speak to two other folks who were really instrumental in bringing us to where we are today. We wouldn't be here where we are today without the help of these two folks. They're not on the board today. They've, they have left the board. But their presence really is still felt on the board in, in everything we do. And that's Tams and George, who is in the audience. Oh, she left? Oh, sorry, she was here. Tams and George, who was our representative from the Historical Society, and Nicole Goldman. They were really valuable assets to me and, and the board. And we miss them, but I think with our new folks, we're excited about our new opportunities going forward. Just quickly, just a quick reminder that the Historic Districts Commission and the Historical Commission was merged in town meeting in 2015, November 2015, town meeting. And the new commission just started in June of 2016. So we're relatively new in our new role. And that's the evolution of where we're going in, in the future. But I want to talk about transition, transformation, sorry. Because I know that oftentimes I get up and speak about the Historic, Historical Commission and there's these shadows and these ghosts in the past of how the Historic Districts Commission operated and how difficult it was to operate, to come before the board, and the rules were so difficult and restrictive. And, and I want to talk to that a little bit here. And we have documented design guidelines that we initiated in 2012, which 83 pages of design guidelines. We've updated it in 2014 massively and we continue to update it as new things come up. But we've added new things. We're, we're recognizing that there are changes in materials and there are changes in what people need for their homes. And we're, and we're recognizing that we need to be responsive to those. And these are the types of things that we've done. We, we recognize there's a difference between a historic and a nonhistoric home. We, we allow different types of windows now, which were never allowed before. Aluminum and vinyl clad is allowed. We have other windows, Fibrex and Ultrax, that we've never allowed before. Solar panels are a normal thing right now. Fiberglass is another material we, we allow. Just recently, we've approved PVC deck railings and fencing systems because of their durability in homes and they're able to withstand the, the elements. Synthetic decking and, and even non-traditional construction to the dismay of Doug Jones, I think.
No, I think it was me. Any Doug?
One of those Dugs.
Sorry, Doug Brown. Sorry, sorry Doug. Yeah. But we do allow those because we're, like I said, when I spoke before, we're not trying to make Falmouth a museum, but we're just trying to protect the Historic Districts. So I think what this has meant to show is our flexibility and, and our adaptability to change and new conditions that are required. We've streamlined the approval process. Now, in 2018, we had 92 applications to the, for certificates of appropriateness. 66 of them were approved administratively. That means that they were approved literally within days of, of submission. So these were things that repairs or the materials were approved materials already or things that were able to be that our bylaw allows administrative approvals. So that meant that only 26 actual hearings had to, had to be conducted for things that were much more complex, new constructions, additions, things like that. So that was a big improvement to move the process along. So we don't require everybody to come to a hearing, even for the simplest things anymore. Now, one of our accomplishments last year was that we achieved the, we changed the demolition delay bylaw. Now, what was changed was we, we were successful in changing the delay period from six months to 12, to 12 months. That aligns Falmouth most towns in Cape Cod who were already at 12 months and some already are at 18 and even moving to 24 months. And what that does is offer some protection to, to historic homes that are outside the Historic District. I think there's sometimes there's not clear what the demolition delay bylaw does, but it's really only for houses outside the Historic District. And the list of significant buildings is another important element. That's a part of that because the demolition delay bylaw requires a list of significant buildings. That's for, for the execution of, of the bylaw. And what that is, is a list of significant buildings, like I said, outside the Historic District. So what that means is that those houses that are on the list are now subject to a demolition delay. So if someone wants to buy, buys a house and they want to demolish it, if, if they have to get a approval to demolish it or they're required to delay 12 months before they're allowed to demolish it. And what that delay period is, is to make them rethink. It's like a cooling-off period. Do you really need to demolish it? Is it really a better option to preserve a house that really is special to us and, and special enough for us to put it on the list?
But they are allowed to renovate it in many different ways, correct?
Sorry?
They are allowed to renovate it.
Yes. Oh, they're allowed to renovate, yes.
Outside the Historic District, there are lots of things they can do to the house, just not demolish it.
Correct.
Can I ask a question while we're at it? On the delay process, say somebody comes from far away and doesn't have any clue about this demolition delay and they buy a house that they just have a plan to just tear it down just because that's what they planned. It would there, is there going to be some kind of a mechanism where you use some, I don't know, CPC funds or something to create a fund to say, okay, maybe...
Jumping ahead to my last slide, Doug.
Okay.
But the first, there is a question though, though. If, if there is a, if there is a demolition delay on a property because it's on the list, the people can come to the commission, to the Historical Commission, and ask for a waiver of the delay. Now, if they can show that the house has been so altered or it's in such a state of deterioration, and that happens and we've, we've approved a lot of demolitions for that reason because they're so deteriorated, they're filled with termites, we approve the demolition immediately. So it's not hard set. It can be waived.
That wasn't going to be my question.
I know it is, but that's my last slide, so I'm not going to get to it.
Okay.
Now, for example, these are, these are significant houses in our terms that are outside the Historic District. Hopefully, you'll recognize them. This first house is in Falmouth Heights. The second house is right at the, at the mouth of Falmouth Harbor. These two houses are in West Falmouth, one, West Falmouth Harbor, and that's the College Light Opera House. These are outside the Historic District. These are what we consider significant houses. They have significant architectural details and prominence. Not prominence because they're big, but just they're, they're unique enough that if they were gone, I think the, the neighborhood would suffer and the town would suffer. And what we don't want to see happen is this. You know, the blockhouses on stilts that get demolished just because. So this is what we're trying to preserve. So, so this is what the demolition delay bylaw and this list of significant buildings list tries to protect because they don't have Historic District protection. So just for, people really don't quite understand what the difference in these different mechanisms are, but, but that's what they're for. So anyway, in 2018, we did, we did complete our historic inventory survey. We surveyed the whole town. We surveyed every house over 1965. That was our stopping point because it was 50 years, approximately 50 years. And from that inventory, we found out that Falmouth has 3,800 houses that are pre-1965. Now granted that, based on our guidelines, they're not all considered historic, but soon enough, they're going to be. You know, so we wanted to at least be aware of what's out there. Now, in the MACRIS inventory, which is at Mass Historic, we currently have 1,500 listings up there. So those are our most significant historic houses. So that's what we have loaded up there. So what we're in the process of doing right now is evaluating the, the inventory. What's new? What did we miss? We're doing a Form B surveys. We have 399. A Form B survey is a provenance of the house. What is its architectural history? Who lived there? What's its importance? You know, why, why is it an important house? We're going through that process right now. The CPC is funding those. And from those reports, we're, ultimately, we will update our list of significant buildings as well. Now, this is the big one right now that we're certainly, currently in the process of. We are proposing in, in Fall Town Meeting to adjust the existing Historic District boundaries. Based on the bylaws that were created in 1975, our, our bylaw boundaries are setbacks. They're, I'll call them arbitrary setbacks of 100 feet, 150, 200, and there's actually a 250 feet that I didn't recognize until afterwards. That's what the bylaw dictates right now as far as creating the Historic District. Within the Historic District, there's 1,019 addresses, properties. That's currently in all the seven Historic Districts. So our, our warrant proposal is no properties will be added to a Historic District. And as a matter of fact, 126 will be actually removed. And why we can remove them is these are, these are properties that are literally just caught in that arbitrary line. They could be around a corner. They could be behind a property. So if you have a property that's 75 foot deep and the Historic District goes back 100, 25 feet is going to your property, the property behind them that has nothing to do with the Historic District. But technically, today, they're in the Historic District. So we actually have surveyed it and we are, we are taking properties out of the Historic District we claim them because they really are not contributing to a Historic District. We think that it more accurately reflects the spirit of what the, the bylaw was meant to do at the time. It simplifies the requirements of the applicants. They don't have to bring certified plot plans. They don't have to designate where the house is on the property. Is it in? Is it out? You know, type of thing. And they were also, and this is also recommended by the Falmouth Local Comprehensive Plan, the Historic Preservation Plan, and the Cape Cod Woods Hole Planning Study, most recently. So it's something that's, that's been out there. People have recommended that we should be doing it and we are in the process of doing it. So, sorry. So we've heard you. We are doing our public outreach. We currently will, are planning three town hall meetings that will be in conjunction with our regular meetings. That will be before our regular meetings separately, not part of the meeting. So we will have presentations there. We had our first one July 6. Our second one will be actually tomorrow night. And then we have one coming up in September. On the 8th, this, this Thursday, we have one in West Falmouth. On the 14th, we have one in Woods Hole. And on the 22nd, we have one at the Falmouth Library in the Herman Room. So we have advertised public outreach meetings. We have mailed a brochure to all addresses in the Historic District. I think we have a brochure that was in your packets. Hopefully, Susan, you received one of these. I hope. So that we make sure that everyone is aware of these. Not only because they, they've read the ad in the newspaper because they got the brochure in, in the mail as well. So we want to make sure that people are informed. They know what's going on. We don't want them to get a misconception that there's something strange going on here. We're very open about it. So like I said, there's 1,019 properties. Zero properties will be added. 126 properties removed. And what will happen by the change in the, what we're proposing is that instead of the arbitrary line, it literally just becomes the property line. That's, that's what we're proposing is that the new boundaries become the property line for a property that's in the Historic District. So if you live on West Falmouth Highway and your house is on West Falmouth Highway, your whole property is, is in the district. The person behind you is not. So that's what we're proposing.
So, Ed, quick question. When you say no properties will be added?
Yes.
So if you, right now where there's a line, you know, a property could be, you know, part of a house or part of a barn or something that is, is actually going to be added. So that's not really a...
Well, that's what this is here.
247.
That's what that is.
So that's...
But the property, the address...
So you're making a distinction between a structure and a property?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. And then will there be grandfathering? So if someone buys a house thinking, phew, it's not in Historic District. It's not going to cost me a lot more to, to do my energy-saving, you know, improvements or whatever. Are those, are those going to be grandfathered?
No. Once, once the bylaw gets changed, it becomes effective whenever, let's say it passes, it becomes effective June of 2020.
So 247, you know, folks who have structures who are not, that are not in Historic are all of a sudden going to be in Historic?
It's really 106.
How many?
106.
Okay. Well, well, primary versus accessory, it's still money. So it's, it's 247. So those are, and those are the people that you're trying to reach with the outreach?
Well, their, their property is already in the district?
Just maybe not all of their property.
Correct. They're already in the district. So they got this brochure because their property is in the, in the district.
Okay, so in terms of notice?
Yes. So they got the notice.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, they got the notice. So after adjustment, the 1,019 properties in Historic Districts will come down to 893. That's, that's what, what will happen. So it'll be a, I, I think a better bylaw because it will, will be more reflective of what the intent is. It'll be more reflective of really the Historic Districts. I don't know the rationale at the time it was done, you know, why, why that was, was done the way it was, but it is what it is. And I think what we're just trying to do is fix that now to be more accurate. Now, if you look at this diagram here, the green line is the current Historic District. This is North Falmouth. The red line is the National District, Historic District for North Falmouth. So when the, when North Falmouth Historic District was designated as a National Register property, this, the red line shows how they, they defined it and it's by property line. Because they recognize it's the property. It's not, it's not an arbitrary line. So really, what we're proposing will more closely reflect what the National Register districts look like.
Question on, on that if I might be. So how did that come about? Did the National Register randomly decide to go to North Falmouth?
No, the Historical Commission at the time applied for it.
Okay. And so did the, the citizens who participate or how did it work?
Well, the application is put in, is prepared by the Historical Commission. It's prepared, it's a lengthy process. It's probably prepared by a consultant because there's a lot of documentation that needs to go on to justify a National Register designation. They have to show the properties. Each property is defined, why it's in the Historic District, its provenance, a little bit of... I don't know about notification. I, I've never gone through a, a National Register notification process.
People have told me, folks in the Heights, that it was attempted and they were...
What was attempted in the Heights was to be a Historic District, not a National Register.
And the folks didn't want it.
They didn't want it. That's what I understand as well. They didn't want it.
The National Register District goes property by property, not by an arbitrary property line. An arbitrary setback.
Yes, yes.
And our bylaws, arbitrary setback with the National Register is properties are added to the district by property.
Because when you actually put the submission, especially for a district because it's the North Falmouth Historic District that's put on the National Register, each property... each property is listed individually. Not this property a hundred feet back. It's that property. And then a provenance of what that property is. So that's really what we're proposing, that we would more likely reflect what the national register historic district looks like. So like I said, that's, that's going on right, so that's going on right now. As we speak, like I said, we, we're having our public outreach meetings. We've gotten some phone calls based on the brochure. We know people have gotten them. They're questioning, uh, what does this mean? And in, in probably the majority of the cases of the phone calls that we've gotten, people's houses, their, their property is already in the historic district. They think something's changing and it's not. So they're already in there. They're just getting a confirmation. You're already in the district. Nothing's going to change. It doesn't get worse if anything.
Do you have any sense as to what those buildings are, the primary and accessory? Most of the accessory shed, out sheds and things like that.
It could be anything from a doghouse to a garden shed to a barn to a garage to a boathouse. I mean, all we have to go by is the GIS maps and the GIS maps has little brown squares. And that's the designation of an outbuilding. So we want it to be as transparent as possible when we did this. So when we, when we put our application in and we were identifying it and we were going through the properties, we put everything down. We don't know what's, what those little squares mean. But it's not a house because we can tell the house. There, there's something. Now, ninety-nine percent of those accessory buildings will never come under review because people won't get a building permit for them. So the only time a certificate of appropriate is required is if you're applying for a building permit. That's the only time. So if you're going to tear down your garage or make a major renovation to a garage or a barn, you might have to go to the building department and get a building permit. If not, they'll never be affected.
But the hundred and six primary are more likely to.
Yes, the hundred and six property. Well, that's what I say. It's more likely the hundred and six which are residences, which are the houses.
So this is going to affect the accessory bylaw probably, right? In terms of, because folks who may want to do the accessory bylaw would come, would go to the building inspector and now they'll have an added potential.
Those wouldn't be detached. I mean, I think the accessory here doesn't mean that accessory. The accessory here means a detached building.
But I'm saying if you, if you're renovating, I think what Susan's saying is if you.
It may, if they're putting the accessory apartment over their garage.
Yes, it will.
Yes.
It could have an effect.
It could. It could.
It, it will be a little bit of a burden to some people because now their second building is going to have to meet the standard. But if you think about some of the development that's been done and you think about where a developer wants to come in and say, put in condos on a, a large property, the front building is protected, but the big red barn in the back is not. And it changes the whole setting. So I think it, I think it makes sense even though some people will object.
Well, some people will object. I mean, it's interesting. When you go into Woods Hole and Falmouth Village, you see very small properties and that's where the majority of the properties that are being taken out are because the properties are so small that the boundaries are extending overlap, or they're overlapping. But when you get into North Falmouth and West Falmouth, there's properties that are five acres, ten acres, you know, that all of a sudden you've got this gigantic blip, but it's really nothing. It's just open land. So the majority of, of the, of the, uh, the, the houses coming in, like I said, it's really going to be the hundred and six.
On just that issue, I, I know of one property, um, the homeowner's eighty-ish, larger property and has been hoping to, you know, stop, uh, with her hammer and nail and her fence and all of that and to sell it. But it's going to have, I think, a more difficult time with the enti, part of the enticement for developers was, oh, the, the historic district only goes, you know, a hundred and fifty feet from the center line or whatever it is. And the, you have all the rest. It won't be as expensive. So I, I just think that'll have a.
It may have, but remember, we don't determine use. So the building department and the, the bill, the building, the planning board and the building, the zoning, ZPA determines use. So we can't determine whether condos go onto a certain property or, or whatever. I mean, that's not our purview. Once the determination is made, they're going to build whatever that they're allowed to. Then we take over as from a design perspective.
Right, so the expense of the building could be affected.
It could be.
But do we really want our historic districts developed into five acres of condos?
That's the other side of the argument. And then you have the eighty-year-old who just can't afford to live there anymore.
Right.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, it's all things to be considered.
I mean, I think that's why you're doing, I know we talked about this, I don't know, it was back in the spring or.
Yeah.
I don't even know what it was.
But the public outreach, I think, you know, we, we talked about that and I'm really happy to see sort of that, that number of meetings getting out there and that mailing to everybody that this will potentially impact.
Yeah.
Um, so that they have that because, you know, so many folks don't watch these meetings.
Yeah.
And so sometimes they come at the very end of the process. Um, and if they're not a town meeting member, they, you know, they just aren't part of that discussion either. So I think it's, it's great that we're just getting, you're, you're making that public outreach a big component of it. And I think particularly that mailing to everybody is just, you know, then they've had their eyes on it.
Yeah, that was, that was very important.
Doug?
I think more important than the outreach was what you've done before that was the coming of age of the Historic Commission realizing that these windows do look authentic and that they are practical. Because that was a big part of the reason people were objecting to being in the historic district.
So limited.
Because they have to use wooden windows and wooden trim and, you know, they're just feeling like shortchanged that they're not getting to use these modern materials. So I think a lot of the objections will go away because of your new policies.
Yeah, like I said, unfortunately ghosts of the past take a long time to disappear. We almost never reject an application. We never say no. We approve almost every application. We're not flexible to the point that we don't follow our standards. We do follow our standards. That's why we've done it. But we allow ourselves the flexibility. We don't hide behind the rules. So we allow ourselves the flexibility to look at each situation separately and understand what's going on here, what's, what's the purpose of it. And when we do make exceptions, we document why we made exceptions so that we're fair and consistent. So if somebody comes and says, well, they have that kind of window. I want it too. Well, you don't have the same situation. And if you do have the same situation, then we'll allow it. So we're very clear to setting precedent. And, and be, but one of the things we're very concerned about is fairness. Fairness to all the people that are in the seven historic districts, that they're getting the same rules applied to them in a consistent way. And we're very careful about that and we're very cognizant of it. But we're very, like I said, we're very fair.
And, and I think the balance is to, to Doug's point of view, that the other piece that comes into it is that, number one, you know, you, we want to preserve the look. But if it's so cost prohibitive that no one's going to maintain their property at all, then it defeats the purpose.
Yeah.
And the other piece of it is, we have to, you know, just be open to other materials that are greener.
Yeah.
Or just, you know, more enduring so that you're using, sort of you're doing the replacements less. You're not replacing wood every, whatever it is, fifteen, twenty years.
Yeah.
So I think in some of those changes, it's recognizing that the value is to preserve a character but not at, um, you know, not to the cost of everything else that also goes into a community. So.
Yeah, and, and you know, we, we had, we had a, a homeowner come in just a few months ago and she wanted to replace a fence. This is a great example. She had a wood fence. She lived on Shore Road. And she had a wood fence that was literally deteriorating and falling down. And she wanted to replace it with PVC. And we told her, well, that's not in our rules. And she went through her arguments of, of why she thought it was better and the material she was proposing, she thought was a better solution. So we said to her, well, we're willing to listen to you. If you want to propose this material, we're interested in it because we're always looking for new materials. She came back the next meeting. She made a presentation. She bought samples of the material. We've approved it now. So now for all fencing, we've approved this PVC material that looks terrific. We don't, again, we haven't bastardized our standards because we, we've approved a material that's valid. But we went through the process and we listened to the homeowner and, and, and we did that. So.
And one more thing that I think it's important for people to know while we're talking about it is the responsiveness that I've seen as a contractor. When I want to do replacement windows or roofing, it's an express permit. It's quick. And I can put in my permit and I submit what I'm going to use for windows, even if it's in the historic district, and often get the response within days. Unless there's some sort of complicated situation, it is very fast. And that's the biggest thing that people are afraid of is the long cumbersome process. So it's really changed.
Well, like I said, you can see the numbers, like eighty, eighty percent are now being done administratively. That's literally within a couple of days, they're getting an approval.
Right.
Great. Thank you so much.
Well, I haven't finished.
Oh, sorry.
Quickly. So now this is a, this is a new one, the Woods Hole District. We've talked about it. We're just starting the process. We, we heard you about the outreach and we are planning on the outreach. Annie has contacted the Woods Hole Business Association. We're planning to meet with them and speak with them. Um, so we will talk with them and, and explain to them what we're trying to do. But just a point that certainly is important for us and, and, and for them to understand. The commercial areas in North Falmouth, West Falmouth, half of Woods Hole already, and the whole Falmouth Vigil, Village are already in a historic district. So there are no, there's not this detriment that people are perceiving that, oh my God, it's going to kill my business when most of the commercial businesses, at least in the central parts of the historic areas in Falmouth, are already in historic districts. So I mean, I think that's a strong argument that we will make to them to make, to, to see what, what we're looking for. Now, this is what we're talking about. This is the area that we're talking about. It's that area beyond the drawbridge. Because the area down Water Street to the drawbridge is historic district already. So Pine in the Sky, the post office, the gift shop, Sun, Sunbird there, uh, that's all historic district already. The Woods Hole Inn, uh, Water Street Market, the Water Street Kitchen, sorry. The Community House, the Candle House, that's all, that's what we're talking about is not in the historic district. And it's the last part of really that very important Woods Hole commercial area that's still very unique. And what we don't want to see happen is this. This is Provincetown. This is their main street. We don't want, and, and literally, I'm not saying it's going to happen, but that could happen because there is no oversight of that one part of the commercial, of, of, of Falmouth, of Woods Hole, of commercial area. So that's what we're trying to preserve. I mean, it's an exaggeration, but.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have that kind of shop in Falmouth either.
You could have. So one of the last things, uh, historic district markers. About a year and a half ago, we spoke with Ray Jacks about the historic district markers, what we had proposed, what we were thinking about at the time. We've probably been talking about this for two years. He talked about his wayfinding project. He agreed to incorporate this into it. It seems like a year and a half later, that project is either not going fast enough or it stalled. We don't know. I've asked him several times. I, I don't get the impression it's going. So we're going to maybe put a little more heat on it ourselves, if we have to bring it forward ourselves because we think it's really important. It's important for, for the town. It's important for the homeowners and businesses. They feel a pride in their historic districts and I think to, to have designations like that around the town, I think are important. I've seen them in other towns. When I go into a town or a town center and I see that marker, it like, wow. And I start looking at the buildings because it makes it special. It tells me this is a special place. And I, I think Falmouth Center especially, and all of our historic districts are special places and I think we should be telling people that they are. So we're going to be resurrecting that project again with, with the new board.
It's a good heads up to prospective buyers too.
It does. I think it's important.
I'm sure a lot of realtors are going to have a heart attack.
And then, and then lastly, th, these are some of the other things we are working on. And here's what you were talking about, Doug. I, I have made a pitch to CPC to provide funds to private individuals for CPC funds. Currently their bylaws don't allow it.
That wasn't really the question.
Okay.
It was regarding the demolition delay by law.
Yeah.
So it seems to me that at some point, we'd be good to have a Historic Commission fund just for the purpose of if a homeowner comes to town and buys a house that he plans to tear down, not knowing what he's buying, and comes for the permit and gets told no, uh, there's a delay. And now they're frustrated because they've just put a big investment into a property, made a mistake, whatever. If there was a fund that you could say, look, if you made a mistake and you don't want to keep this house, we've got a fund that can take it off your hands and maybe find another buyer. Similar to what we just did with the Affordable House with the Housing Trust.
Yeah.
Bought the affordable unit and they're going to resell it to the appropriate person. Maybe there could be a fund like that to, just as a backup.
I, I think that probably the, the first solution should be that we should be, we should be educating our realtors better. To notify homeowners when they're buying properties. Today, they're not telling them when they're in a historic district.
Well, for, there's also the advent of online marketing by the homeowner themselves. And that might, the ball might get dropped. It's not always a professional, professional realtor.
Yeah.
Every time now.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. So anyway, this, what, what we're trying to do is help the, help the private homeowner to get, to restore their historic homes. Susan, to your point, you know, that sometimes people can't afford it. And that's true, especially elderly people that are in homes and they've been in their homes for fifty years, eighty years. And they're at a point and they can't afford it. And, um, the CPC has the funds, but they just created this law years ago that said, we will not, we will not give funds to private individuals. So I think it's a worthwhile thing to talk about. I spoke with, to, I made the presentation to the CPC. They seem very interested in it. I'm sort of just waiting for them now. So I, but I think it's something that's valuable for Falmouth as a town. You know, and for all the residents to, to have access to, to funds when, when, when they need it. Especially for special properties.
Thank you. Doug?
Can I just clarify that the extension of the district are two different topics. One is coming up at this town meeting.
Yes.
And then the Woods Hole one is down the road plan, but they're not.
To be determined.
To be determined, but it's not going to be part of the town meeting discussion.
First one is an adjustment. The second one is an expansion.
Right, thank you.
Correct.
Thank you. Good point. Great.
So the second one will add, I, I want to say eight to maybe ten properties. That's the expansion. Where the first one, there's no new properties. Zero new properties. And then the last thing that we're involved with, Christian, Christian Vale is our, Vale is our Historic Commission representative on the Poorhouse Advisory Committee. I'm actually also on there as an at-large committee member, but it's something the Historical Commission is very interested in. So we're very excited about the project and, and, and the movement going forward to getting this done. So those are the other things we're working on. So.
Thank you, Ed.
That's it.
Great. Thank you very much.
Great report. Great report.
Okay, next we have, and thanks to all the members who came tonight. It's nice to see everybody. Uh, we have a presentation by consultant on updated final report on Upper Cape Town's collaborative wastewater analysis with Joint Base Cape Cod. Julian, did you want to?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We have, um, consultant Ed Leonard from Wright Pierce. Uh, Wright Pierce conducted the consulting studies, actually two of them. We had an earlier one released about eighteen months ago. And this is the, uh, really the final update on that original study and analysis. And Ed is with us with a PowerPoint, uh, presentation. And the intention would be that following this presentation, uh, we would shortly thereafter place the, uh, report on the town website as well.
Thank you. Welcome.
Well, thank you. So as Julian said, my name's Ed Leonard. I'm the project manager with Wright Pierce, working on this project. Also here tonight is Lou Ragazzino with our Rhode Island office that's been involved a little bit behind the scenes. And Brian Dudley with DEP is also here. So I'm going to give you a quick overview, a little regional context, a little background on Joint Base, and then mostly talk about the, um, the outcome of the project itself and then give you a chance to ask whatever questions you'd like. So back in the late nineteen nineties, early two thousands, DEP determined that a lot of the coastal estuaries were having problems with nutrients. Uh, began the, the Massachusetts Estuaries Project, started, uh, preparing total maximum daily load reports. And I know you guys are familiar with those. The CLF filed a lawsuit in about twenty thirteen. There was a settlement agreement which prompted the Cape Cod Commissions two oh eight plan update. There's an image on the, on the upper right which shows in, in red, the watersheds that are in, that have TMDLs. And then the yellow star is the Joint Base Cape Cod Treatment Plant. And the green star is the Joint Base Cape Cod Effluent Disposal Location. So, um, the two oh eight plan identified that there are a lot more wastewater management needs than there was treatment capacity available. Joint Base has always been a location that folks have said, wouldn't that be a great place to explore a regional wastewater facility because there's already some infrastructure there? Uh, and because those needs areas are really close to the treatment facility. because there's already some infrastructure there, uh, and because those needs areas are really close to the treatment facility. The Upper Cape Towns have had a long history working together and managed to successfully get two grants from the Commonwealth, uh, to look at regionalization. So the first grant was in twenty seventeen, and it was the four Upper Cape Towns, as well as representatives from the base and Mass Development. The real purpose of that project was to, um, to put some meat on the bones of what would a treatment, what would it look like? What would it, how much would it cost for a regional solution to the identified wastewater management needs? We developed that report. The conclusion of that effort was that, yes, it did make sense, and it made sense to pursue it further for, with, from a planning perspective. We received comments on that report from DEP as well as the Cape Cod Commission. And we're, the town of Falmouth was the lead, the fiscal agent, was successful in getting the second grant to really dig into the details of the key issues, which here is the effluent disposal aspect. So at the beginning of the project, we asked each of the towns to identify what their wastewater management needs were, short term, midterm, long term, as well as what type of flow needed to be managed, whether it was sewage, septicage, or treated effluent. The towns had slightly different perspectives on what they needed to be addressed. And you can see on the right, we kind of added up all those flows for sewage, for effluent only, and for the combination. And the existing condition is super small. Uh, that's what the flows are today. Just a little bit above it is the existing capacity, that little red line. In the midterm and the long term, we're looking at ten times that existing capacity that's there. So the key conclusion from the effort was, if the towns need what they say they need, then we need a, a whole new treatment plant, significantly larger treatment plant. So the base itself is twenty-two thousand acres. Uh, the treatment, the, the, it's owned by the Air Force. The treatment works are owned by the Air Force, operated by the one oh second, uh, Air National Guard. It was built, the infrastructure was all built pre, pre-World War Two for seventy thousand troops. There's only a couple thousand people there now, so the system's a lot smaller. The treatment plant has been downsized to that little red line I showed before. The treatment plant's located in the southeast corner of the base, and there's an eleven mile forest main that's shown in that yellowish color that goes up past the born landfill, um, almost budding the canal in the northwest corner of the base.
What's the size of that mean?
Uh, twelve inch diameter. So key conclusions from this effort, plenty of land to build a treatment plant. That is not the issue. No butters. Good nu- that's all kind of good news. And effluent disposal is really the principal constraint, and if we can't get that additional permitted effluent disposal, it's really not a viable concept for much more than one town. So you might ask, why is that possible in a twenty-two thousand acre base that you couldn't get rid of much effluent? And I'll just show you real quick. Um, the hatched areas of the Zone Two Watership Protection areas, uh, the polygons, the red outlines are contamination plumes from historic military operations. And the tan area is the Upper Cape Water Supply Reserve, which is managed by, uh, the state agency, the Environmental Management Commission. So you can't, you have to really, you have to ask a lot of people for permission to work in the tan area. In addition, there are nitrogen-sensitive watersheds, so back to the DEP MEP, there's fourteen or so watersheds that emanate from the base. Many of them are nitrogen-sensitive. And when you put all that stuff together, you get about a hundred acres in the northwest corner of the base. That's about where those existing rapid infiltration basins are that are available, that are suitable really, and don't have other issues associated with them. Most of that land is owned by the Army Corps of Engineers and not the base. So as a part of this project, we looked at what different effluent disposal methods are available under Mass General Law and what would be feasible for the application. And they range from land-based discharge, which is similar to what Falmouth has now at the Blacksmith Shop Road Treatment Facility, some other innovative alternatives to get water deeper into the ground. And we also looked at a surface water discharge of highly-treated effluent to the canal as a potential. From a planning perspective, we decided to proceed with, from a costing and planning perspective, the, the conventional land-based as well as, uh, conventional, uh, surface water disposal with, of highly-treated effluent. So because this was a critical thing, we put together a workshop, which was attended by about forty people, uh, from representative, representatives from each of the four towns, as well as Barnstable, and agencies, stakeholders, like EPA, DEP, the Army Corps of Engineers as one of the key property owners, Buzzards Bay Coalition, the Upper Cape Regional Water Supply Reserve. We, we got a lot of people in a room to talk about, uh, key issues related to effluent disposal. The conclusion of that meeting was that it will be challenging. There'll be a lot of steps, procedures, permitting steps to go through in order to get that capacity, but that nobody identified any insurmountable issues. And DEP went a next, a step further and wrote a letter to the group saying the same thing. Essentially that they discussed among themselves and concluded that it seemed feasible to get that additional permitted disposal capacity. But it, it's gonna take some time. It's not a foregone conclusion. It will take some time in order to get through that process. So we did an alternatives analysis. We looked at six different alternatives in order to, of different treatment methods, different disposal locations, different disposal types, and came up with what we're calling the candidate plan. It's not the recommended plan. It's not an actual proposal for people to act on. It's a, it's a candidate plan. It's the, sort of the best of, of the pieces to start the discussion with towns about if they wanna move forward, this is what it looks like. So each town would build what we called a conveyance, which would be a lift station at its facilities, and piping that gets it to the Joint Base Regional Facilities, a new treatment plant on the base, new forest mains, the eleven miles, and, and new disposal in the northwest corner of the base on land to be determined. The estimated cost, and, and for Falmouth, that would be treated effluent from the existing Blacksmith Shop Road, with a lift station basically located at the existing treatment plant site, and a forest main about seven miles to the base's effluent forest main. The estimated capital cost is about a hundred and fifty-five million dollars for the four Cape Towns, and about two hundred and thirty million dollars for the four Cape Towns plus Barnstable. And that doesn't include things in the towns, like Mashpee has to build some sewers. That doesn't include that. Sandwich has to build sewers. It doesn't include that. But Sandwich, uh, sorry, with Falmouth would have no, there's no other cost because your, your regional cost starts at your treatment plant, which exists. So the key thing here is to compare, it's not the hundred and fifty-four million, it's, is that cost-effective compared to what needs to be done in Falmouth on its own? You know, the regional approach versus the, on, on your own approach. So to facilitate that discussion, we put together a conceptual cost allocation model. And then we worked with the town's wastewater consultant, GHD, to compare the, the regional plan with the plan that had been put, has been put together for the town. It's a challenging study to do because Falmouth has had numerous steps of wastewater planning efforts over the years, but GHD's been involved with, I think, all of them. So based on them piecing together their pieces and our pieces, both of us concluded that it is cost-effective for Falmouth in the long term, and it's, although it's close, and that it's probably wor- it's worth Falmouth considering, uh, continuing to play a, a role in this planning process. I think further decisions can be made at a later date as additional information becomes available, but, um, so that's Falmouth's conclusion. The broad conclusion was for all the towns, it made sense in the long term, uh, and that there are sufficient advantages to continue planning. One of the key things is for, is to take that cost-effectiveness analysis one more step based on the report that'll be finalized shortly, and to really look hard at that and whether or not a town might want more flow or less flow, or not be involved at all. I think those are key decisions that need to come out of the next hand, handful of months to a year. So from a timeline perspective, this is a complicated project. This has been something people have been talking about for over a decade, and it hasn't happened because it's really complicated. There's four or five towns that are involved. Joint Base Cape Cod isn't run by one person. There's lots of different tenant installations. Uh, there's the county government that, uh, the county jail is out there. So lots of different interests, lots of different timelines. There's lots of stakeholders involved and permitting entities. So we're, we're projecting that this would be an eight to ten-year project to get from a study phase, through the study phase, through design and construction, and having a fair amount of flow going to the new facility at once people are at the point of deciding to participate or not. There is some existing capacity, that little bit that I showed, that could be used by probably one of the towns and to help kind of get the thing going, but that probably wouldn't be Falmouth based on, um, what Falmouth's needs are. And we can do, um, we can get into that in questions if you'd like. In terms of recommended action plans or action items, um, this is really a roadmap. So what we wanted to do is prepare a report that, that folks that wanted to advance the topic could look at the pieces, what permits are required, from what agencies, um, what funding might be available, what the timelines are, what the easements would be in order to decide whether they want more capacity or less, and to decide when they might wanna be involved. So the, the next step would be to work through those issues, really secure that permitted effluent disposal capacity. And probably the first task would be to figure out how that are, how that will happen. Either by an additional grant, that, the, uh, a third grant, or by the towns deciding to appropriate some funds, moderate amount of funds to advance things the next step. But I think the key thing would be, um, to decide whether you wanna be involved and to foster that participation and collaboration to develop an intermunicipal agreement for planning only, um, to kind of get to that point where folks know how to move forward.
Great, thank you. Uh, Sue and then Doug?
So, it sounds a little bit like the base has not said, we will, um, will allow our land to be used for this, but we've spent a ton of money and a ton of people's time assuming they would. Am I wrong?
The base has said consistently and for a while that they're very interested in divesting themselves of the infrastructure. But that's the existing infrastructure that's there. I don't think, the base isn't really opposed to expanding the disposal locations. However, there, there is an impact on their operations if they dedicate land that's available for military activities to something that's dedicated to effluent disposal. It's, it's ultimately the key issue is-
So I'm not wrong?
You're not wrong. No, it's ultimately the key issue is how to, how to, how to get rid of the highly-treated effluent.
So when you said it, for Falmouth, it's close on the cost, the, the value, do you know which of the disposal options were used for Falmouth? Because we have a wide range of options. We might consider our own outfall, which is super expensive. Then we might consider the Allen parcel, which is very reasonable, although it's got a limit to its capacity. It could certainly do the job for quite some time for us. So do you know which one?
I don't, I don't, I don't remember the specifics, 'cause I know, I know enough about Falmouth's challenges to know that there are a lot of sites that have been on the table in order to look at them. I wanna say it was several of the expanded ra- subsurface infiltration, or rapid infiltration that were, that are in North Falmouth. But I, I don't wanna say how many or which ones, 'cause I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay.
But GHD, in, in the appendix, there's material from GHD where they identified which specific ones they were comparing.
All right.
The regional plan to, to the Falmouth plan.
Right. So the report has that?
The report has the information.
The other thing is our timeline is, we're, we're planning to advance in five or six years to our next phase. And we're gonna need a disposal site soon for that phase, 'cause we're already pretty much against the, the limit here for disposal. And, uh, so that's just a consideration. But the other thing is, um, that twelve inch main, that's a huge part of the question is, will that really be sufficient?
No.
No.
No, that's part, part of the, of the big capital cost is to either, is to add additional pipes that run that full length in order to convey substantially more flow.
So that's included in that hundred and fifty-four million?
Yep.
Okay. That seems kind of conservative. I would have expected it to be more. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions, Doug?
I guess I just want to touch on the point with the outfall that Doug was raising. Just to make sure people are aware, when we're talking highly-treated effluent, it's the kind of effluent that we've not put in water before, in an outfall pipe. And it's not like what was it done to Boston Harbor, or what we considered into Vineyard Sound or Buzzards Bay thirty years ago. We're talking about water that isn't quite drinkable, but pretty darn close, right?
Correct, yeah. This is, this is, would be similar water to what's treated at the Blacksmith Shop Road facility now. It's, it's advanced treatment that has a filtration step and has very, very low nitrogen levels in it.
Right. I'm not, I'm sure people are aware that the Blacksmith Shop treatment plant is treating it that highly, and I just want to be aware. We wouldn't be considering these unless-
Right. These are not conventional, old-school secondary treatment standards. These are tertiary advanced treatment.
And even the Boston outfalls, only primary treatment, and they, no neg- they can't find any effect, and that's huge.
And just so folks know, we are gonna have on the sixteenth, um, the Water Quality Management Committee is gonna come and give their presentation for the work that, um, they've been doing. So, you know, we're, that, that, having this in advance of that, I think, helps sort of set the stage and get us thinking about all of the options, um, that are gonna be available. And we will need to make, um, we, we'll need to vote on that particular issue, um, as the fall, that fallen into winter, I think, by December.
Right. Just to clarify, Madam Chair, that would be the sixteenth of September.
Sixteenth of September, yeah, sorry.
Right, because their final thing is due in October to the state, I think.
Right. So we have to make our recommendations. So they'll be here at a joint meeting, we're, we're planning, uh, Planning Board. And, um, so we'll be kind of taking a look at these issues again. Any other questions? And what was the timeline that we thought that this would be on the website in the next couple of days?
I would say just by the end of the week.
Great.
Yes.
Excellent. I'll look forward to reading that in detail.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you for summarizing. I know it's a lot. And thank you for sticking around. It's a lot, late night. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Um, all right, next we have to review and discuss the William Hollow Road Abandoned House. Mr. Suso, did you wanna just set the stage for this?
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, the, uh, the board is in possession of, uh, we have a summary memo that Assistant Town Manager Peter Johnson Staub has assembled. We'll have him comment on that uh, in a few moments. Um, that summarizes, uh, the, the concepts. I know Peter's also has a PowerPoint, yeah, here with some slides. You know, in a nutshell, um, the, a recent town meeting had approved funds to demolish a long vacant property on this eighty-eight acre, um, uh, town water supply reserve that was acquired many years ago. And, um, we were contacted by, um, Town Meeting Member Mike Duffany, I think, believe it was back in February, inquiring about whether there could be an alternative, um, use for this, um, vacant, uh, single-family home. And Peter, did you wanna, um, kick off and give a few, uh, further description on that?
Yeah, I think the town manager has, uh, has outlined it much more succinctly than I probably would have, uh, so thank you for that. The, this is one of those wonderful opportunities where we don't, um, we don't have, uh, an easy one for the board of selectmen in some sense. It's, it's not a simple matter of, do we like affordable housing or not like affordable housing? It's not a matter of, do we care about our water supply, or do we not care about our water supply? It's, you know, it's one of these sort of more, more detailed look at how these issues balance out and what are, what is, what are the better or best locations for affordable housing? And how do we best allocate our resources? So a- as the town manager said, this property was acquired back in nineteen eighty-seven for municipal purposes and/or water resource protection. There was a small house that was already abandoned at that time on that eighty-eight acre parcel. And, uh, I guess it's known in some quarters as the Baker House. Uh, it's less than one thousand square feet. The, um, current condition, it was, uh, Mike will tell you, it was very well constructed with some really high-quality timber. The interior is essentially gutted, um, through a combination of vandalism and, and neglect. So it would be, you know, a pretty complete interior rehab would be required. But I think the, uh, we had a couple of staff conversations about this, where we, um, spoke with the, the town planner, affordable housing, uh, the housing coordinator, um, Ray Jack, representative- representing, uh, Water Resources and others. And, uh, it's really not, the, the consensus staff recommendation is that this is not a great location for affordable housing. It's a single isolated unit on a private road, uh, fairly narrow, unpaved, private road. Uh, so it raises some access concerns, it's not convenient to services. Certainly, we have constructed affordable housing in, in locations other than town centers, um, but it, it tends to work better if, uh, certainly there's a better road, but also if there's a little bit, uh, a, a, a higher concentration of housing. Um, so certainly for a unit in this location, it would not be feasible for rental housing. And I mention that because in the town's housing production plan, uh, the clear priority that is identified in that essentially housing needs assessment is that when we, when we target new construction of affordable housing, the need is eighty-five percent rental and fifteen percent homeownership. So, if town resources are involved, um, I would, you know, and the, and the board has heard this before, we're, you know, we're certainly trying to put a high priority on rental housing and have been really successful recently with some nonprofit housing developers coming forward with some really nice rental housing proposals. So, for, for that combination of reasons, uh, it was the-
Excuse me?
The staff recommendation that we essentially stick with the original plan. Uh, and by original plan, um, what I'm referring to there is, there was an article that was brought forward under the capital planning process, submitted to Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee to demolish this structure. That was prompted to some extent by some complaints from the neighborhood about some troublesome use of the property. And that was approved and funded by Town Meeting. So, it's our recommendation that we proceed with that path, down that path, uh, as, as approved by the, by Town Meeting and the Board of Selectmen. Certainly, we would not be opposed if there, someone has a, a property that they can relocate the structure to, you know, certainly there would be no harm to that if there are no town dollars that are required to do so. I don't know that that would be economic, given that the, you know, the structure is in pretty tough shape internally, so when you add the cost of a relocation to that, I, I'm just not sure those numbers are going to work. Um, so that is pretty much it. Ray, um, i- i- if it is agreeable with the board, um, we'd like to have Ray just say a few words about the water resource issues at this parcel.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, in the upper left here, um, this building right there, that is the Crooked Pond Water Treatment Plant. So, on this parcel, since it was acquired for, uh, municipal water supply, uh, protection, we had sited a municipal well, and for the entire eighty-eight acre parcel, there are three other identified sites for municipal wells. The plant was built for that purpose. The Crooked Pond, uh, well went in, and that's permitted at about a million and a half gallons a day, one point four seven, uh, to be exact. And then we took the Coonamessit Well, which is proximate to that, located on Coonamessit Farm, which is permitted at a million gallons a day, and we piped that over to this plant so that we could have, uh, a much higher effluent quality of the water, uh, for two of the existing wells that we would have had. So, my concern really isn't about this house or any other house per se with respect to affordable housing, as much as it is, the future is a very long time, and we have very few places to meet up with, and this happens to be one. So, the only other areas that we have designated for this are really the, um, Long Pond area, which is our principal source of supply. This represents our second largest source of supply. So, capacity wise, you're looking at, let's say fifty percent for Long Pond, twenty-five percent of our remaining capacity is at this location. We are pushing the edge of the envelope on our supplies and our permits at the present time for the future. We will need additional sites. It's not a question of if, it's only a question of when. And the only other site that we have available is located up in the Yashima Valley area, which is similar to this, and it is high yield, low impact. So, my primary issue here, I guess this evening, is to at least make sure that the board is aware that our water resources are very, very limited as to where we can go. Um, the future is going to be difficult and challenging in order to be able to meet the continual demands, uh, and also that no source is necessarily permanent. So, wells can fail, geologic formations can actually fail. So, existing wells could have to theoretically be replaced, not just as much as it is new wells for additional supply, but being able to maintain an inventory of the existing wells. So, I could not be supportive of anything that would encroach on the town's ability with respect to lands that are designated already as water supply protection areas. And that is the primary designation of this parcel of land.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? I'll begin there.
Just to clarify, what's listed as Crooked Pond Road is commonly known as Williams Hollow Way, correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Doug, did you see the building?
Uh, no, just the pictures. I did not go out and look at the building.
I've seen the building.
I'm just, I was, as the builder, I was wondering, is there anything there could, as opposed to having it demolished and dumped? Is there stuff that we could offer to not go into landfill, but usable?
I defer to Mike, who's been out there looking at it, because I didn't do a-
And the stonework isn't, it really, it was quite impressive what that stonework is.
The stonework's kind of cool, but that wouldn't be moved, I don't think. It's more of a landscape feature. The chimney might be saved.
Mike, did you just want to come up? And I know that you had sent a letter, uh, an email and had been out, and I think-
Uh, yes, for the, for the record, my name is Michael Duffany, I live on Patty Road in East Falmouth. I have some pictures here, I only have two cents to-
It's okay, we'll share, we're good chairs, thank you.
And this, this structure came to my attention just after we scraped the building over at Peterson Farm, which actually, I had a bee in my bonnet about trying to repurpose that building because it had a tremendous foundation, and they found when they went to knock it down, it was twice the building that they thought, and they had to get more money to knock it down, because it actually had concrete that was covered with, uh, shingles. So, long story short, this one, somebody, uh, pointed this house out to me that it was next to, in line to be demolished. So, I went out and looked at it, and I was, frankly, I was really taken aback by the, by the stonework on this foundation. Somebody put tremendous amount of time, as you can see, the entire foundation, inside and out, is just what you see in the pictures of stone. It has a, a garage under, it's got a patio that's constructed above ground with two chimneys, two sets of stairs, an outdoor fireplace, and it's all in, in really good condition. The house is without a doubt, it's a, an attractive nuisance, it has been for quite some time. And the, you know, the, you know, kids, I guess, have, have kind of gutted the house and, and broken all the windows, so it's all boarded up as you see. But when I went in the house, it was raining, and I'm in the house, and the house is dry. The floor, the floors are straight, they're not buckled. It's a two-bedroom house. It's actually got two fireplaces in the house. I mean, it's, the, it's a charm of a little house. It's only a two-bedroom house. So, it's only a thousand gallon tank required for the system and a small leach field, and I understand the location of it. But it also is a pre-existing house, it's not a new structure. And when I, when I look back at, at a recent project that was approved, twelve houses on basically two acres of land, you know, this is not a, a big, I don't think, a, a big impact to the area. There are houses well beyond it, much closer to the well site and so forth. Long story short, I contacted the, uh, Falmouth Housing Trust, they have an interest, they'd probably like to speak a little bit to it. We're not, we're not here, I'm not asking the town for money. But I'm asking us to take a pause and see if it, if we can get the funding to put this house, you know, to purpose this house. I think the location's as good as any of the ones that, that people have donated for Habitat, or, uh, some of the houses in Falmouth have been donated land. They're just, they're here, there, and that's all part of the big picture, is to get them here, there, not put them all in one spot. I like downtown, but, thank you.
Quick question, Mike? How much is it going to cost?
Uh, to put this back in the, into good condition?
Soup tonight?
Probably two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Wouldn't you have to give special attention to trying to preserve the stonework and-
Yeah, so this, basically what it is, it's a full gut, the roof's got to come off. It, you know, it, even though it doesn't leak, it needs to be replaced, the rafter tails are, you know, are in tough shape. But the bones of the house, the floor joists, all constructed of fur, it's probably a nineteen fifty-ish house, I don't know exactly. You know, it was, it was a baker house, maybe it was from the masons, the Baker Masons. I know there were bakers in the, in the area. Peg Freeman was a baker.
Harold Baker.
Yeah. Um, so there, there is some other, you know, probably significance to other folks about the building, but for me, it was repurposing. It's the, you know, it's kind of the town, you know, putting his money where its mouth is, and, and, you know, we have a building that needs to be repurposed, we have groups that will do it. Uh, we, we would need the disposition of the house to be properly done by the town in order for this to all happen. But I think it's a, it's a time where, where the town itself can, can lend a little bit, just a little bit to the, you know, to the need.
Well, how's the access, the road, and how much would the town need to plow?
Uh, well, the, I don't know how it's maintained now, it's a private road, I don't know if the town does plow that road.
I don't think it does.
We plow a lot of private roads, I don't know if it plows out.
I don't think so.
You know, and I, and it frankly, I mean, I can't answer all the little, those little nuances, again, that, my interest is seeing, is the preservation of this and being actively involved in that process with the Housing Trust, because they've, they've expressed an interest.
Someone with a plow truck could buy it.
I guess, no, uh, Peter and Julian are saying that the town plows it, we don't maintain it.
It's on the plow, Rob, but the-
Some folks, I think, who probably live on the road are saying that that's not what happens, so we will take your word for it, because you live on the road, so maybe it's just-
It's on the plow list, I'm sure it's not the first priority.
It's, uh, it's less than, it's, it's maybe at the bottom of the list. I've worked on that road and it's, I, I don't think I ever remember seeing it get plowed.
Thanks, and if you want to make a comment, just, we'll get in line, we'll definitely take some other comments up.
And just want to comment that we've had a lot of emails from a lot of the neighbors that are, uh, opposed to this. I think it's been a nuisance for so long that they just want to put it to rest.
I can totally respect that. I, it is an attractive nuisance, it, you know, until recently, the town boarded it up, you know, there was probably a lot of activity on a regular basis, it's in the middle of the woods. It's not far off the road. It's very accessible, and it needs a lot of TLC.
Great, thank you. Um, and I know there are probably some folks who live on the road, probably some of the individuals who sent us emails, so if anybody else wants to make some comments on that, if you want to come on up and introduce yourself?
My name's Tom Weaver, I live on the road. And here are some pictures of the road and the house in its current condition. Uh, the house was built in the eighteen-
Early, early nineteen hundreds.
Very early nineteen hundreds, night, not fifties, much earlier than that. We understand and agree with the need for affordable housing in Falmouth. We've written to you guys regarding our concerns about using the Baker property for this purpose. Basically, when you look at it, you'll see that it's far away from any amenities, subject to power outages, because that happens on roads like this, for days at a time. And the access road, as you can see from the pictures, is pretty poor. It is at places twelve feet wide. Dirt road, single lane. There are environmental concerns with the properties nearest to Crooked Pond, the Crooked Pond well site. Single end, single lane, dead end, private road. Over half a mile long. The Baker property, circled in red, is a quarter mile from Sam Turner Road. There are eight houses on this road, total, most of which you can't see because they're... Some are clear around here, you can see three right there. Most of them are, there are several summer houses, three are summer houses, five are year-round. We don't have a neighborhood association, we've maintained the roads ourselves, dividing the costs equally. Power line is also private. We've replaced the poles three years ago, we paid for them. The house, three of the houses have generators, others do not. Buchanan there has been plowing the road himself for the past ten years. School bus stops at the end of Pondview Drive, which is up here. No public transportation. Nearest convenience stores are in North Falmouth, three miles away. Sandwich Road, on one fifty-one, there's a convenience store there, that's three and a half miles away. That's it, that's as close as they are. We've shown you some of the photographs, the house is in very poor condition, it's a mess. House has been abandoned since nineteen eighty-six, since before the town bought it. Unimproved lot, no power, no ri- road access. Very recently was boarded up, as you can see, after twenty-five years or more of destruction by squatters, vander- vandals, coyotes, deer, squirrels, they have all lived in there. Yeah, as well as tree limbs have fallen on the roof. Area's owned, agricultural double A, if we purchased, you know why? And we just think it's, it's a bad idea. Not that we're against affordable housing, we just think this is a bad location for it. Do you have any questions for me?
No, thank you, Mr. Weaver. So, just, you know, just to some of those points, and then we can have another comment from the, from the, um, audience. But, um, you know, right down the road, I'm sure everyone's aware that right down the road at the end of Sam Turner Road is, um, an affordable housing development that's been there for a very long time. So, I think, you know, just, I'm speaking personally, not for the board. To me, the bigger challenge is not so much, this is, I, I grew up on Caraville Drive, so this is, there, there was a bus stop where, near the end of that road at one point in time, because I was on that bus. So, those, those pieces concern me less, because if, if other folks can live and enjoy the property, I'm sure that someone, you know, we could make it as an affordable home, that, that person would enjoy that same location, it's a gorgeous location. My concern is just the price point is a little bit more concerning for me. What we're going to get for what it sounds like is, you know, a shell, albeit of, you know, a shell with some really beautiful, um, building characteristics. Um, it, it seems like, you know, that is, we're, you know, part of that commitment to affordable housing is just making those dollars go as far as possible. And given the small size, um, that's the part that concerns me a little bit more than some of the other, um, some of the other, uh, you know, issues that certainly make it challenging in some ways, but also make it a really beautiful spot. I'm sure that's why folks love living there, because it's a beautiful part of town. So, you know, I just, that, looking at those pictures and at what probably, when I hear maybe two hundred and fifty thousand for a one thousand square foot, um, that, that investment to me seems a little bit, um, I'm just not sure that that's the best investment, but that's just my opinion. Doug, and then ma'am, if you want to come on up?
I think the more, bigger concern for me is the Zone Two designation and the municipal well. It's my biggest, biggest problem.
Come on up, ma'am, if you want to just introduce yourself?
I'm, um, Patty Drolette, I live in East Falmouth, and I am on the board of the Housing Trust and have been involved with it since nineteen ninety-five. So, I was there when we were doing the Longshank subdivision, which is the one off of Sam Turner, a little further down from you folks. I think Peter Johnson Staub made some good points, but I'd like to remind everybody here that fifteen percent of what we're trying to do should be homeownership. So, we have made great strides in the rental side of things, and it takes a lot of work. But the Falmouth Housing Trust niche is usually much smaller projects. And I think our past, most recent home on Deer Pond, um, is an indication of what we did with a lousy road and put a beautiful house and an adorable family with two little boys that are running around in those woods and playing in the pond. It's not rental housing, it's workforce homeownership housing. Eighty-eight acres, we just want to carve out a little piece of it, that driveway is not far from the road, and get another home built for somebody else. I don't think that the cost of it is prohibitive for us. We have a lot of resources to leverage, we've been very successful with some philanthro- philanthropic giving, and, um, we're confident that we can get this done. And I think Michael's number's fair. And we're not looking to do anything more than, than take a little piece of that house that someone did live in at, at one point and try to restore it. And the workforce people own cars, they have jobs, they're not indigent, they're just looking to get a foothold in this town. And the workforce people own cars. They have jobs. They're not indigent. They're just looking to get a foothold in this town. I don't have anything else. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other thoughts or comments?
Hi, I'm Joanne O'Sullivan. I'm the president of the Falmouth Housing Trust and I'd just like to offer you an exercise. If this parcel excluding the watershed protection was in some, some remote part of town and a, a family wanted to take it and buy it and rehab it and restore it and live in it, would they be refused a building permit because of where it is? I don't think they would. I think the fact that an entity like ours wants to utilize it for a purpose that gets, um, young and talented workforce, uh, to stay in this town, which is leaving, um, is part of the barrier here. I think if people are objecting to an abandoned property there, making good use of it would address those concerns. Demolishing it is probably easy. That's the easiest thing for the town to do. Gone. Um, what we're suggesting and willing to undertake is a project that would take time. It would take a lot of resources. We're willing to do that even if it's just for one house because it's one more family that has a foothold in this town. So I just thought I'd put that out there. Thank you.
Doug?
Could you build a new house on a Zone Two municipal well site? I don't think you could. I'm saying, I'm asking, would you build a new house in a Zone Two watershed for a municipal well? I don't think you'd get a permit. It's a building department question really, but.
No, there, you actually could, even within-
Oh, you could?
Even within the Zone Two.
Would you have to have a denitrifying septic or?
Yes, there would probably be special conditions and everything on it, but yes.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver, if you just want to make one more comment and then go from there.
We're not objecting to a family living there. What we're really concerned about is we're paying now for the road and the power. Who's going to pay for it if another family comes in there? Is the town going to share in responsibility for mainte- for maintaining the road and the power and the poles and paying the people who take down the trees along that road so that they don't fall on our power lines so we don't lose power quite so often? We still do in the middle of winter when you have to walk in and you can't drive in because it's covered with snow and there are power lines in the road. Is the town going to pay for that along with us? That's one of our concerns. That's a major concern.
You said it would be the housing trust.
It would be the homeowner.
That is initial question.
It would have to be the homeowner.
It's a homeowner.
I don't think that, if, if I may, I don't think the Falmouth Housing Trust, and certainly Addie can comment, but I don't think they normally pay operating costs of homeowners. I think they generally, they produce the housing and they sell the housing and then the homeowner needs to be able to support themselves in the home.
Can I ask Mr. Weaver a question?
Yeah, of course.
If you'd come back to the podium. Uh, just to get an idea of what that cost is per year for each of the residents in there, just so where we're, what we would be putting, if additional cost we'd be putting on a full housing.
Or Mr. Buchanan, if, if Mr. Buchanan, I think he probably knows that.
Mr. Buchanan would have that because he's the one who coordinated this.
My name is Bill Buchanan. Actually, I live in the middle of Spectacle Pond. Okay. I've been pretty much taking care of the road probably. I've been there thirty-five years. I've pretty much been taking care of that road, uh, maintaining it, plowing it and, uh, through my own finances. He is correct in saying that we have paid for, in the past, I would say the past five years, we put excess of thirty thousand dollars divided between the seven families that are on that road. We replaced five poles right in the very beginning. That was fifteen thousand. We paid, uh, over fifteen thousand dollars for tree work for, through the years, through wind damage that comes down, taking our lines down. A year ago, last March, when we had all the storms, we were out of power for over a week. We couldn't get out the road because we couldn't get anybody to come in. All, most of a lot of Falmouth was in the same, some ba- same boat that we were in. We did have to pay a private tree person to come in. That cost us three or four thousand dollars to take trees down so we could have electric company come in and put the wires up. We are responsible for poles. Electric company is responsible for the transmission lines. So I would say in the past five years, we have put a excess of thirty thousand dollars out of our, divided between seven families. That's our concern. We're, we're not opposed to affordable housing. I think everyone on the road wants affordable housing. But how, you know, how is that, how are they going to be able to reimburse us and become like the eighth family in that road? And there's constant, uh, expense on that road just because of what it is. It's a private road. The town, uh, I don't know what, what year it was, they took it, took rights over the road for, by eminent domain to bring in the water filtration line up that road. As it turned out, they couldn't bring it up Spectacle Pond Road. Uh, but didn't take, they only took rights over it. They didn't take the road over. So we still maintain it. We still try and plow it when we can. The town comes in and clears it if we have a severe storm so we can get in. Uh, Mr. Brown's worked actually on one of the houses there. So he's, has firsthand knowledge of that road and the limited access to it. If you pass another car coming in, you have to back up ten to twelve feet at the widest point. Mike is absolutely correct. It's a beautiful cottage. My grandfather did all the stonework on that house.
Oh, really?
And, uh, I used to work for Elsie Baker when I was a young styled. And it's actually is. It's a, it was a gorgeous car, gorgeous house, uh, but it's been abandoned for so long and it is deteriorated. It's a shame that it has happened that way, but the town just let it go for so many years. It's just been recently in the last month boarded up. It would have been nice to see it gone back. When the town did buy it, I did approach the three hundred committee to try and see if I could buy the house. And they said there's no way they could sell the house to a private, uh, entity. They said I could move the house, but that was an impossibility. After probably cut down fifty trees, move the house. So the house was left abandoned, left it to be deteriorated and vandalized. So that's our concern. It's basically how are we going to be reimbursed to pay for all the repairs, uh, on the road and the maintenance? That's our concern.
That's an interesting point. If it was not available for purchase in nineteen eighty-six, why would it be available for purchase now?
I'm not sure what to say to that. It's not controlled by the Conservation Commission or the three hundred committee as far as I know.
Okay.
Madam Chair, could I just to raise a point is, is the board, I think, so we're in, in Peter's memo, um, background memo. Uh, he raised the, uh, or, or he offered the reminder about the great limitations that this board selectman has on Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund monies to facilitate, uh, construction of affordable housing. And, and I guess I, uh, I thought I heard it mentioned that this would be done totally privately and there would be no requests for, to this board for Falmouth Affordable Housing Funds were this to go forward? Is that more to clarify?
I'm happy to clarify that.
Sure.
It did sound like that.
Yeah, I think that's what we heard.
Yeah.
We have other resources, but we would certainly want to try to get some support from the CPC. I'm not saying we're not going to ask the CPC for any assistance. What I'm really asking for is put out an RFP if we don't overburden the planning board and see what you get for responses. I know it has to go to town meeting, but I'd like to see what, what other ideas would come up with, what to do with that little piece. And I understand the expense of maintaining a private road. I grew up on one. Yes, it's still there in West Falmouth. And there's a little homeowners' association and everybody puts in money every month, about fifty dollars, a hundred dollars, and there's a little kitty. And there's a few more houses on the road, so I understand. But I, I do know that Deer Pond is also that way and has to be maintained. It's not going to, it's never going to be easy to find appropriate affordable housing that's going to be ideal in all circumstances. But this house is small enough and I think we can sell it cheap enough that the mortgage is not going to burden them if they have to contribute to a, even if it's an informal association. There's a way to work the budget out and I'd be happy to work with anybody who was considering buying it for those purposes. So, thank you.
Thanks for clarifying. But it's the board's thought or pleasure on, um, obviously anything that we do eventually, I mean, we already have gone to town meeting and funds have already been appropriate previously for the demolition of this particular property.
Correct.
Yeah.
So we have all the neighbors opposed and all the staff opposed and a few people want to save it for affordable housing. So it's a tough call.
I just think about, and maybe Peter, you can remind us of where we're at for, um, our projects that are kind of queued up. I know we have tapped that fund pretty heavily, um, and we're, we have some projects that we partially funded or we've approved that haven't gotten funding. Can you just go? I know I didn't ask you to have them ahead of time, but if you can.
Uh, from the best of my recollection, I, I can offer some, some, uh, some background on that. So the, um, there was a, uh, an affordable housing proposal that the Board of Selectmen voted to fund um, with the, fully committing the balance of what was in the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. Uh, and the, uh, the board's vote also included, subject to further appropriation, an additional three hundred twenty-five thousand for that rental affordable housing proposal. So that, uh, you know, we're essentially in a negative position at this point with the fund. Um, there is a, a second, uh, affordable rental housing proposal from Mr. Glasso. I believe it's the second phase of clippership that, uh, he recently received a state grant for. So that is an application that the town has not yet received. But it is in the pipeline and, um, I, I'm aware of another one that, uh, that is in early exploration stages, also in the downtown area for, uh, senior elder housing, which we expect to be coming, um, within the, within the year.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have one more thing. I'm really sorry.
Go ahead.
I just want to remind, you know, you're asking about availability, the availability of these funds and I get that. But my experience with Saint Mark's was from the time that the, it went on the warrant for town meeting to the time the RFP was issued, to the time that the RFP was awarded to the trust. It was four years before we broke ground. Those units were sold before we ever got any money from the CPC for that, for those four, three units. So time wise, I think you're four or five years out. I just, that's my opinion. I don't think that this process ever goes quickly. It takes years and I know that from experience. I've watched it at Oddfellows and I watched it with Saint Mark's. So I know how this, how time ticks. And then we're not even in a position to apply for CPC funds until there's, there's been an RFP awarded. So we're a ways out. I don't think those projects that you're mentioning are the funds that we're going to be going after. I think it's beyond that stage. Thank you.
Thanks. Sue?
I, the, I like the preservation. I like the fact that the neighborhood has come together and has made clear that, you know, they're for affordable housing. And in fact, you know, seem to say that they would welcome the preservation of this house. They have one concern and that is the, the maintenance of the thirty thousand dollars over however many six or seven homes. And that's, that's something that there's no answer to right now. I think that if there was a, a suggestion that there would be assistance to the homeowners, if they wanted to create an association so that generations to come would have the formalization of what they've been doing, which is chipping in for, you know, uh, the, the electricity, the, the fact that the lines, um, are not owned by the utility is a huge issue. It is incredibly expensive to, and I know that they've, they've done some work on that, but going forward, that could be, you know, a really big burden for, for a young homeowner, you know, with the, the next generation. I, I think that, um, I'm going to have trouble voting for this if there's not some assurance that there would, would be a kind of a guarantee to the neighborhood that this home would be able to, to, um, you know, pitch in for expenses in the same way that everyone does. Um, however, that's determined.
Doug?
How much money did we, uh, was appropriate to tear it down?
I bel- I believe it was ten thousand dollars.
So there's ten thousand dollars right there that could be, I mean, creatively saying, if we didn't spend that ten thousand dollars, maybe that could be put towards.
Legal expenses for a homeowner association or something.
So if you do the quick math of thirty thousand divided by seven families, it's forty-two hundred and eighty-five dollars over five years. These are just rough estimates. We don't know what's going to happen, but you'd have to have a pretty significant, uh, commitment of funds. It's almost a thousand dollars a year.
Which if, if what the Falmouth Housing Trust is suggesting, that it could be a low mortgage, it'd be about a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars a month added on to their mortgage.
Right.
And if they, I sort of feel the Falmouth Housing Trust can show a way that the numbers work. I would love, I guess I would love, we're in no, in no rush. It's been nineteen eighty-eight since we bought the house. It's not deteriorating quickly.
Yeah, we could delay on this.
There's no rush to go ahead and tear it down. And if there's a way we can see a pro forma to see.
As long as we don't just let it linger longer and longer and have more and more deteriorating and vandalism.
It's boarded up now, which is good.
Right. But there's a, but there's some damage to the roof. So I mean, it's not.
It's going to have to be replaced anyway.
Right. But my point is in four or five years, a house that's, I mean, we can board it up to some extent, but if we don't really have a project in the pipelines with, I mean, the town can secure the space a bit more. But I guess, you know, I agree, if any decision's going to be, be made, it needs to be fairly timely so that someone actually takes responsibility for preserving, if not already beginning with the renovations, because I understand that funding takes time to line up. But we have a home that's in a state of disrepair. And when we're talking about a project being four or five years out, um, you know, where are we in a state of repairs, you know, that we're four or five years that much further down the road? So I guess I would agree with Doug that, um, you know, a, a timeliness component, if the, if the board's feeling is that they want to at least, um, have a little bit more information in front of them. I think we have to balance the fact that we do have a, an attractive nuisance, a building that's deteriorating, um, maybe a potential place for, um, much needed affordable housing. But we, you know, we don't have another thirty years or, you know, probably even another several years. Should just let it sit there while people make a decision. That would be my concern.
That's what I'm getting at. I don't want it to just keep going on like it is. And then also there's the potential, uh, need of a denitrifying septic, which adds to the cost and the maintenance. That's another expense. And you might spend a thousand or two thousand a year just maintaining your septic.
I think we just don't have very clear numbers in front of the board right now and it's not to anybody's, it's not to critique anyone. This was just sort of put on it because it was a concern that was brought to us. We're hearing an estimate from somebody who's a very experienced builder, but I think, you know, Mike would probably contend, he hasn't gone in and done a full assessment like somebody would if they were trying to do a project. Never mind the issues of the, the septic. So, um, you know, if, if it's the board's pleasure to, um, I guess it would still have to go to town meeting, correct?
It, it does because the, the land was not acquired for affordable housing purposes. So a town meeting vote would be required to change the purpose and to sell property, to authorize the board of selectmen to sell municipal property.
And to subdivide a piece of it because it's-
And to subdivide because it's a single eighty-eight acre parcel.
Right. I, I, Frank Duffy indicated that the subdivision aspect in and of itself may not require a town meeting vote, but certainly the sale of the property does.
Is the plan to tear it down this week?
No. So if a petitioner wanted to come forward with a town meeting article?
Certainly always possible.
Is it something that this board has to be the proponent of? I guess I'm asking if an interested-
Uh, yeah, so I mean, oh, I don't know. I guess a petitioner, yeah, I guess a petitioner could, uh, propose an article. If, if I might, could I just comment on the, the timing issue that Addie Drolette mentioned? She's absolutely right that, you know, affordable housing takes years. It takes a long time. Um, I, I think there may be a distinction on the two projects that, that she referenced in that funds were approved, um, but it took a long time to get the money in hand. So I, you know, I guess my question here is if the board is looking to have change moved quickly, um, you know, unless Falmouth Housing Trust can put together pro forma that says we'd like- that says we'd like to get town funds, but we don't have to, so we're gonna begin the work, hoping that someday we might get some money from the town, then then she's right. Then there's no necessary competition with the other projects in the pipeline. But if a firm commitment is needed now, then there absolutely is competition. It's a, it's a finite pie.
Mm-hmm, and we don't really have numbers yet.
So there are some decisions, if we put this decision off for a couple of weeks and allow folks an opportunity to do some problem solving, then there might be a different picture presented.
Right, but I guess I I would just note that we are now in August. Pretty soon we're going to need, um, to have any potential warrant articles. They're gonna need to at least have some body to them, if not final versions.
Thirty days.
Right, so, um, you know, where, that's where we're at, so I think we could put it off a couple of weeks, but um, the timeline is pretty tight for it to go to town meeting this November, right, so. Do I have a a motion from anyone? Do we think we wanna?
Who's gonna do the exploring?
An interested party, yeah.
I mean, I guess I wouldn't mind knowing, if if someone could come back in three or four weeks and say, it actually could be done affordably. I don't believe it really can. I don't believe that this is a project that actually could satisfy a affordable housing ownership because of the
Some of those other things.
So the other costs that are gonna be in, whether it's association costs, whether it's a denitrifying system, whether it's a mortgage, uh, whether it's, uh, you know, this road isn't, you're gonna have to have a car that can make it through this road or, you know, you're gonna have costs that I think are gonna make it probably cost prohibitive for this affordable workforce. But if someone could convince me otherwise, I could then be supportive of, okay, let's see if we can do it, but right now I'm not convinced.
There's a lot of question mark, and there's a lot of question marks.
I'd be in favor of kicking it two weeks.
Okay.
Or even more than two weeks, but.
Well, we can't because we can't, I mean, we can't kick it too far because somebody has to bring, either this board has to, I I don't think it would happen this way, but we either have to bring, um, uh, put an article on the warrant ourselves asking for this particular circumstance to happen or petitioners do, and that's, that's gotta happen in thirty days.
It could. It could be next year too. I mean, again, eighty eight, it has been thirty five years that nothing has happened to this house except for boarded up. And if it forced to happen until either spring town meeting or next fall, that wouldn't be the worst thing.
Well, it wouldn't be the worst, but.
I'd rather decide.
Kids could come along and rip those boards off and be back in there and.
Yeah, I just think that, you know, every sort of, I mean, I agree, it's not, it doesn't happen, happen tomorrow, but, you know, every year down the road that we go, we have a changing set of circumstances in a, in that, I just, you know, I wonder every, every winter that there's any damage. Now are we looking at a different project? Now are we, you know, does the characteristic of the project keep changing because the structure keeps changing, so, um.
I hate to put an unrealistic deadline, but I just feel like we can't just let it go on open ended.
No, I I think that the, that sentiment is shared by the board, so maybe if, um, I think Sue had a motion to put it out to, um, are we talking about, well, our meeting for the nineteenth is pretty.
Really busy, but.
When, can you remind me, Peter, the date that petition, uh, that articles have to be, did we push it to the sixth or the thirteenth of September? What's the date for?
Thought it was the sixth.
The sixth, right?
I'll check that.
'Cause it was gonna be the end of September.
That was the first Friday after Labor Day.
Right. Okay, so articles need to be in by the sixth.
Yep.
So really, um, it has to be before that date.
Thirty days, yeah.
Okay, so it really would have to be our meeting on the nineteenth if we were gonna have any further information before an article, if it were going to be for this year, albeit it doesn't, you know, could be.
Essentially, yes.
Does anyone have a, any feeling about that or that date as a next date to readdress this issue?
Good with me.
Okay. Second, anybody? I don't know.
Uh, well, yeah, I would second about two weeks for them to put together some sort of a proposal and it's a little tough, but it's a small house.
That's right. Okay, so I think that's what we'll do. We'll put the matter over to the nineteenth of August. We can, obviously, you'll speak with town staff, 'cause it's town property, so if there's some access that needs to be granted for somebody to take a look at it, we'll facilitate that and come back on.
Do you wanna ask if that's realistic?
Well, I don't wanna be rude, but I think it's the only date we can give them, because town meet, our articles are gonna be September sixth, so it's the only time we meet before, yeah, I mean, you would still have the period up until the September sixth if you, if that was what was gonna happen to put something together, but I think this board is saying it really has no information to, doesn't have enough information to make a decision on this issue, and so hopefully some more information be gathered in the next couple of weeks.
And also in that time, maybe the neighbors can give more thought to whether or not this is an acceptable solution. So on the nineteenth, when we're debating it again, you can come and share your thoughts again.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. And thank you. That was a really a lot of information from the neighbors. It's really helpful to hear some of those specific details. Okay.
Along with the pictures.
Yes, along with the pictures and Mr. Buchanan's very long memory of the, the area. Um, all right, we have a request for sign variants, off premise promotional signs, Rotary Club Craft Fair. This is something that we
Very familiar motion to approve.
Very familiar with. Okay, second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Annual Committee reappointments, Veterans Council Committee. Let me just go to that sheet here.
Move report, there's a Jim.
Yes.
Mr. Buchanan?
Jim Sawyer. Yep, to a, um, so there's a motion to reappoint James Sawyer to.
Terminating June third, two thousand twenty.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, and also I think we have to correct the term for the date of the building code, Board of Appeals.
To determine June third, two thousand twenty four.
For Fred, Jim Petro, Michael McGrath, and Michael Duffany.
So move.
Okay, all those in favor? A second, excuse me. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and they'll get a notice?
And with fingers to them for serving on that board?
We'll let them know. Yeah, okay. We have meet, uh, minutes of meetings.
I had no issues with a July eighth public session meeting, so I'd move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the executive.
The executive session, we have, do we have two pieces, didn't we? It's just one.
Um, I think it was just, let's see, the executive session.
Yeah, there was two.
Yeah, so I'd move approval of the first section and not release.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we don't have a, and for, you have a second section?
No.
No, it just was that one. Sorry.
No. Okay, okay, that's okay. Um, and individual selectmen's reports. Anything? Ten, ten.
Uh, what did I do this week? Not the two important.
No, I'm just kidding, please, go right ahead.
No, it's fine, go ahead.
I'll, I'll just make note, uh, with respect to the Assembly of Delegates, there's a charter review for the county coming up, so if anybody has any concerns or suggestions, please send them to me. I'll be happy to, uh, discuss them at the next meeting.
Great. Um, I meant to announce, and I forgot to do it, that Congressman Keating is going to hold an event. It's gonna be at the Walk White Church and it's on August seventh and I believe it's at, I'm just gonna pull it up and look, I believe it's at seven P M. And it's called American Mosaic, Let's Tell Our Stories. It is, it's at six, excuse me, six to seven thirty, Walk White Congregational Church. Um, and it's something that Congressman Keating has put together to ask the community to come and share their stories of, um, their family stories, whether it's their own personally or or generations past of immigration and travel to, um, to Cape Cod or to this country. Um, so just an opportunity to hear a little bit about sort of our neighbors and friends who live here in town, so six to seven thirty on the seventh. Julian, town manager?
Uh, yes, thank you. A couple additional items. Uh, just wanted to confirm with the board, we're continuing to work with the architect and the town's heating, ventilating, and air conditioning consultant in finalizing the internal office layout for the Human Services Department to allow us to proceed to procurement and implement the long awaited relocation of that department to the Marx Building. I'll advise the board as soon as a final proposed layout is assembled, uh, as you will recall, this, as you recall, this will be routinely transmitted to Mass Historic for their review and approval in advance of moving forward. And, uh, of course, I've also affirmed to, um, the board may recall, to Historic Commission Chair Ed Haddad that I'll share this final proposal with him as a courtesy as well. And I want to assure the board that this concept does not include the removal of any walls or fundamental disturbance of any items of historic significance, and that is our, uh, that's our mission and marching orders going forward. I was pleased to attend the reception and discussion regarding Little Pond Place with Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito and newly appointed Housing and Development Secretary Michael Caneely this past Tuesday afternoon in the conference room of the Falmouth Housing Corporation offices at seven oh four Main Street. That was a very cordial and positive gathering and we reminded, uh, the Lieutenant Governor and the, uh, new Housing Secretary uh, that the town of Falmouth in collaboration with our companion affordable housing advocates anticipated coming forward for some additional state funding to facilitate our newly adopted housing production plan. So we were pleased to do that. It was a great gathering, as I noted. Uh, and as in the past, I I did attend the annual meeting of the Falmouth Heights Mayor Vista Association, which was held this past Saturday morning at the Yacht Club at the Marina. Also wanted to advise the board that, um, the staff work is beginning with the consultants on the study of alternative locations for a new Northwest Fire Station, uh, which would represent a merger of the existing North and Western Fire Stations, um, and anticipating a public meeting to be forthcoming as part of that arrangement with a contractor, probably with the consultant. That would be occurring this fall. Following that would be a finalized plan brought and presented to this Board of Selectmen for your consideration, uh, as part of that overall process, and that concludes my report.
Quick request on that, 'cause it, especially, um, in those areas, tons of summer people are gonna miss all that outreach. So I wonder if there can be, uh, if the consultant can be asked to televise or send, uh, mailing or at least, uh, for the immediate point, if we could put something on the, on the town website now, which is to look for that date in the fall and maybe folks can find out what's going on.
Yeah, we don't have a date yet, but I I think when we have the community, this community meeting, um, they've just begun their work just today, so it'll be a little while before we're prepared to go forward. I would say thirty to forty five days before we, uh, at the earliest, before we could have a, a really productive meeting. We could certainly televise that and make it available as well, and certainly we'll, uh, televise the meeting, I should say, and and make it available with the assistance of F C T V, but also to advertise the date. We're happy to do that.
Right, but I'm saying now, because people aren't gonna know to turn the T V on when they go back to Florida.
Or if we, if we, um, coordinate with the village associations to make sure that we, um, are letting them know that this is happening so that if there's input that somebody who's a summer resident wants to provide, we give an, we, we can collect that and pass it on to the consultant. But just opening up that avenue for the summer folks to be able to weigh in.
Certainly.
Because once they're gone, you know, they probably have little, um, knowledge that this is taking place. Um, and there definitely are a lot of, uh, summer residents, so if we can, um, figure out a way to make sure.
Reach out to the associations and.
Yes, let them know that the consultant has started, um, and if they wanna notify their membership, um, and however they, you know, they do that.
Right, homeowners' associations as well as village.
I think Sue's initial comment was important though. I think it'd be great if F C T V could report, record the presentation and then the people in Florida can go on online to F C T, F C T V dot org and and watch it. How does that work? Do we always rely on them to volunteer to come to these events or do we sometimes pay?
We request it. We have a certain allocation of a number of, of programming events through the year.
Okay.
And our, our protocol is that I make that formal request of them in writing in advance, and they've been wonderfully cooperative.
Oh, great.
And this is such an important matter, I'd, I'm quite sure that they would follow. I think the other, the other thought that I had though was, um, so reaching out to those associations, but I think we should also formally put it, um, on our agenda to just announce, maybe for our next meeting, announce the beginning of the process and announce that we will collect public input via sending emails to town.
Right, that's a great idea.
So that way we don't just rely on the, um, associations, but we just, um, you know, we make it clear at one of our meetings and it's clear on the, on an agenda, um, item.
So list, not just, not just announcements, but you're saying, uh, like, list the actual.
It's in it. It's on the agenda. It will say, discuss, um, process for taking comments for east, uh, for Northwest.
That's great.
Okay.
So we're not gonna have a hearing on it now, 'cause we don't have any information, but we'll just announce to people, this is, if you're a summer person and you need to get your comment and this is how you do it. So it's on the agenda. It raises that awareness. Right.
And you put it on the next regular agenda.
Yes, yeah.
But this topic is the location, right?
Correct.
Not consolidation, which we should put on a, a very future agenda also.
Right. Exactly.
Yes, it'll be on the future agenda when we get probably a little bit more from this consultant about.
No, no, this is, I'm talking with the consolidation topic, which.
Yeah, this consultant is gonna give us five alternative sites, a concept of where to relocate, uh, a merge station in the Northwest to, uh, most appropriately serve that area. But of course, the determination by this board ultimately to, uh, close at least one of the stations and and proceed with that merger process ultimately, which over time, uh, that would need to be discussed here and a decision made by this board at a future meeting, correct?
Is it ultimately possible the consultant might come back and say that consolidating North and West is not feasible because of response times? And he might tell us that we really do need?
I know he has all, I was able to meet with him briefly today just 'cause he was here in town and, um, he's received an enormous amount of data. He's gone around and he's viewed, um, I think, almost all the stations. He's gonna be here tomorrow, so, and he's met with personnel, both, not just the chief, but with other personnel, um, in fire and rescue, so I, I think they're gonna have a lot in front of them.
Yeah.
Um, and then they'll get some other, some other information from the town as well, so I mean, I suppose they're, they're gonna come back and they're gonna give us whatever they're, you know, they are looking at response times. That's part of the data that they're getting.
That's the key.
They're, they're gonna look at a, a map of where incidents occur, the, that heat map. I mean, so they're gonna look at all of that.
They'll do the analysis, right.
Mm-hmm.
But I think Sue raises a good point. We just need to make sure everyone's aware that this is happening and those, those seasonal folks weigh in, so we can put that on the next agenda.
I think people are starting to, uh, realize they can trust it. If we, if they send us an email, we'll read it.
Yes, yes, and respond to it, so, perfect, thank you. Any other?
Motion to, yeah, motion to adjourn then.
Yep. Second?
I'll.
Sure. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you.